We are honored today to be joined by some of our very super stellar students today, besides the ones that Natalie is going to be introducing a little bit later. But we have our students that were our finalists from the, our sixth annual ASTS Spelling Bee that I would like to call up to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So Angus Kong, Lily Bowie, and Zakari Bean. Please step up to the podium and if you can lead us in our pledge of allegiance. We're very proud to have you do that.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And so let me introduce you to the crowd. So thank you so much for coming up and joining us and leading us in the pledge today. We really appreciate that. And we've got three folks that have joined us here today. And let me tell you a little bit about them. So the Sacramento Chinese Community Service Center hosts an annual spelling bee at Luther Burbank High School. Nineteen schools from our district, Elk Grove, and St. Hope Public School participated. We had 95 finalists representing their schools. Well, there can only be one person who's in first place, one person in second, and one in third. And those people are here with us today. So our first place winner is Angus Kong. Our second place winner is Lily Bowie from Woodbine. Angus is from Camelia Basic. And third place is Zakari Bean from Carolyn Wenzel. We're very proud to recognize you today. So thank you so much for your great work and your fine spelling and your great role model for your fellow students. So congratulations, and we've got a certificate for you. And maybe I can ask Angus if you'd like to say some words on behalf of your fellow winners?
I would just like to say thank you, and I would like to say thank you for my parents for supporting me, and that's really all I have to say.
Great. Well, that's perfect. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, my computer screen.
No problem. Thank you for recognizing me. So it was Angus who came in first place?
Agnes.
Agnes. Agnes, could you raise your hand? Agnes, congratulations. As a dismal speller myself, I'm very impressed. And I was wondering if you could tell us the word and pick one board member to spell it.
Let's cover up my names.
The word is kerosene. And I would like... A C Ryan.
And I am a terrible speller, so I'm going to say kerosene. Kerosene.
I'm sorry that is incorrect.
Oh, so close.
I gave it the old college go.
That's why we love our stellar students. You teach all of us, so we really appreciate that. Do I have any other board members would like to embarrass other fellow board members? Thank you very much. We will move to announcement of items taken in closed session.
None, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very well, thank you. We'll move to item 7.0. I would like to recognize our fellow board member Natalie Rosas, who's going to introduce this item, and our student advisory council.
Hi, everybody. I'm extremely excited to present this item. Agenda item 7.1 is the Student Advisory Council's initiative presentation, and I'm actually part of it, so I'm just going to walk on down there.
Great, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle Nuns. I'm a senior. I go to John F. Kennedy High School, and I'm Secretary of the Student Advisory Council.
Hello, I'm Isaac Estacio. I am a junior at West Campus, and I am social media chair.
Hello, my name is Carson Moa. I'm a senior at Luther Burbank, and I'm the communications chair.
Hello, my name is Geraldine Castaneda. I'm a senior at CK McLaggy High School, and I'm the administrative coordinator.
Hi, my name is Giovanni Figaroa. I go to Luther Burbank High School. I'm a junior, and I'm the newsletter chair.
Hi, my name is Lena Camille. I'm a senior at CK McLaggy High School, and I am vice president of SAC.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm a junior at West Campus High School, and I'm SAC president.
Hi, I have the pleasure of knowing all of you, but my name is Natalie Rosas, and I'm the student school board member. So before we start, I'd like to thank you all so much for giving us the time to present to you and to explain how excited we are to be here. We've been working extremely hard on this initiative, so we're really proud to be here in front of you and present it to you. So for the 2016-2017 school year, SAC has primarily been working on one main initiative, and that's the Artists of Color Youth Summit. Now, this is a little untraditional of SAC. Normally, traditionally, we work on three main initiatives throughout the year, and those normally range around subjects of food waste, dress code, and most recently ethnic studies. But this year, we decided to take an untraditional route and try something new, and that is to have this youth summit. And what it is, is it is a conference aimed to ease the transition the eighth graders undergo when going into high school. Now, as we all know, this could be a very difficult transition from middle school to high school, because not only is it a new environment, but also students face difficulties that maybe they didn't have to face during middle school. Now, we will be doing this through the use of art-based student-led workshops. So these workshops will be focusing on academics, because we want to make sure that our students are prepared and know what to expect for high school academics. But also, we want to make sure that we are, we're rounding them with the skills that they will be needing when entering high school. So what this means is with along, along with helping them with their academic understanding of high school, we will also be building on their social, emotional, and life skills that will address their concerns and make sure that they start off on the right foot when getting into high school. Now, this table that we see now is data collected from our school district, and it represents the percentage of eighth graders not passing their CASP tests. And obviously, we want to make sure that this doesn't in any way interfere or affect their high school experience. So we want to make sure that despite this, we are giving them the tools necessary so they could start off correctly and make sure that their high school career starts the right way. So now, my colleague Geraldine will explain to you why we're deciding to target eighth graders.
Thank you. So yeah, so based on the data Natalie presented, we want to make sure that these eighth graders from our school district are not taking these trends of academic achievement into their later years of high school. And we feel that the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is a pivotal, critical point when we can target these students and really prevent that enforcement of those type of trends into their later years. For many reasons, we've targeted these students, both psychology, we've, we've based our target audience on both psychological data and survey data we've conducted. Psychological data being that the adolescent years identified by several identity theorists, namely Erickson and Lovenberg, as being the developmental period of adolescence when there is a huge interplay of genetic, nonfamilial, and familial influences. So as SAC board, we want to be that nonfamilial, exterior influence on these students when they're going through this critical period, when they're starting to develop a sense of purpose, a sense of identity, and they're starting to form themselves, really. Several identity theorists, Erickson namely, and his followers have created studies where, have shown studies where it demonstrates that students who find that they can't dedicate themselves to a certain purpose or identity tend to, they tend to fall into a sense of drift, in which they perform poorly in all facets of their life, but we are mainly focusing on the academic, social, and emotional aspects. And moreover, their challenges are heightened with the mix of personal and contextual differences, personal differences being obviously those that they're undergoing physically, cognitively, hormone, through hormones, and socially and emotionally through this change from childhood into the adolescent years. However, there are also contextual differences. Obviously, middle school to high school is a great transition. The high school years demand a lot more rigor, a lot more educational rigor, organizational demand, intellectual demand. There are a lot more social pressures and a lot more expectations from these students. And several theorists and psychologists have identified this as a quote "vulnerable point" in the education pipeline, where students are more likely to struggle academically and fall off track, greatly reducing the likelihood they will graduate from high school. So as we know, they're going through a lot. These eighth graders are going through an array of changes from the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, and we want to tackle these issues. And the best way we felt to categorize these issues and the way to approach them is through surveys that we conducted. We surveyed over 100 current high school students from our monthly youth congress meetings, in which we asked them what they felt would have benefited them going into high school, things they wish they would have known, or advice they had known, that they feel would have prevented them from encountering some obstacles or some issues in both the transition and their whole high school career. And from these surveys, we got a lot of feedback, and a lot of it was similar. Most students said that they wanted just general high school preparedness, that being A through G requirements, information on electives, extracurriculars, campus involvement in general. They also stated they wanted more advice on things like appropriate social media use, stress relief, mental health awareness, and advice, organizational study tips, and political awareness in general. Now, obviously, these students are going through several changes, and it is one of the hardest years, if not the hardest year, in an educational experience for them to start adapting to all these numerous factors and changes that they're undergoing. Several studies have shown that there's a correlation between failing classes and not graduating, and moreover, there are studies that correlate failing classes to those students being ninth grade students failing classes. Right now, ninth graders have the lowest grade point average, the most missed classes, the majority of failing grades, and the most misbehavior referrals than any other high school grade. So obviously, the, the factors that I mentioned earlier are affecting them academically. But we do know that those who do succeed in their first years are more likely to continue to do well in the following years and eventually graduate at a higher rate, more so than their counterparts who did do poorly in their first freshman academic year of high school. So we, the best way we feel to tackle this is through student-based learning. We really want to make sure, sorry, we, the students who do well in the first year are more likely to succeed in the future. And we feel that the best way to go about this and to incorporate it into our summit is through the implementation of prevention versus intervention method. We feel that if we are able to tackle the issues and the struggles that these students are going in the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, we'll be able to stop this type of academic trend into their later years. And we feel the best way to go about this, this prevention, is through student-based learning. So for our workshops, we hope to have current high school students, mainly juniors and seniors, teach these incoming students. We feel that this student-teaching-student dynamic will be really effective in implementing all that we wish we can, all the information we wish we can show our students. There are studies that show that adolescents between the years of 12 and 18, where incoming freshmen are typically the age of 13, youth are more susceptible to peer influence, and therefore, they captivate, their attention is captivated more easily, and they retain the information they are being presented with, if it's from a like-minded source and from those with similar standpoints. So if we have students teaching students about things that they've gone through personally, there'll be a more open, comfortable dialogue, and the workshops will be centered around the students' needs, where they can genuinely convey their problems and their issues, their concerns, and their anxieties about this transition and about high school in general. Student-based learning environments have been shown to effectively raise grades, increase attendance, and enhance overall student engagement. And we feel that this student-teaching-student dynamic will streamline the delivery of the information, it'll be more relevant to the students with more open and comfortable dialogue. And we've created an application for our youth summit already, where we will enlist a little over 50 student volunteers to present the information in the workshops to the incoming freshmen. And after extensive review, we will pick those who we feel are most suited and most experienced in the subject they are trying to teach our incoming freshmen.
Along with the student-led component, art integration into these workshops will also be incredibly important. It is well-known, the benefits of art are extremely well-known. It helps with mental health, critical thinking, and problem solving. But studies also suggest the major success that it has with students and their academic performance when art is integrated into their lessons. One of those studies is that, has been done by Mississippi State University. Mississippi State University had a whole school initiative, and this included the promotion of art integration by teachers in their lessons. Now, this ranged from visual to performing arts, but what the results showed was that art integration greatly reduced educational achievement gaps. And along with that, also, the national SAT scores also showed a correlation between an increase in the verbal and math scores of students with the amount of years that they had taken art. Now, this information was collected from the, from the College School Board, national data. And what we see on the left side columns are, it shows you the amount of years that these students took art with, in relation to their test scores for the verbal and math section of the SAT. Now, what we see here is the more years that a student had taken art, it shows an increase and upward trend in their testing scores. So while a student who took maybe one year of art, their average was 501 on the verbal section and a 502 on the math section, while those students who had four or more years of art taken had significantly, significantly higher scores. So based on these studies, that's why we think it's incredibly important to have art integration worked into our workshops, because we want to make sure that not only are we presenting this to eighth graders and giving them the information, but we want to make sure that they're actually receiving it, engaged, and that they actually retain the information that we're giving them. So now Lena will come up and explain to you why this, why we're catering to this specific target audience.
So as demonstrated by the data that Natalie presented, the more exposure that you have to art, the more chances that you have of doing better academically. And SAT scores are really important in college entry. So what about those who don't have the opportunity to be exposed to arts? With this data from the National Education Association, we can see that student, or people of color are disproportionately underrepresented in museum visitation spaces, and this reflects also on the opportunity not being available for students of color. As you can see, 13.5% of the population, while Hispanics make up 13.5% of the population, only 8.6% of them are museum visitors. Same for African Americans, 11.4% are of part of the American population, but only 5.9% make up the visitors, as opposed to their white counterparts, who are well-represented in museum and art spaces. So 78.9% of them are visiting. And though these, this may result because of historical and socioeconomic grounded barriers, we as SAC want to contribute our part in addressing the situation in this district. And that will lead me into what we hope to gain from this conference, which is by addressing issues such as low academic performance, underrepresentation in, in art in general, and students of color, and also talking about social, emotional awareness issues. We feel that we are easing the transition for eighth graders into ninth grade in an effective way. And we have carefully selected these workshops by considering the voice of other high school students. The workshops being basic high school preparedness, appropriate social media use, communication skills, political awareness, organization and study skills, and mental health. And we want to do this all under an art-based lens, and also having student-led workshops, because we have found studies that suggested this is effective. But to accomplish all this, we would need proper funding, and my colleague Michelle Nuns will discuss that further.
All right. Okay, so moving forward, there would be a couple ways that we would be able to assess the long-term effectiveness of the conference. Couple of those ways would be, we could form relations with freshman high school teachers and get in contact with them about a month or so into their freshman, into their freshman year, and have them give, give us updates about students that they have that attended our conference. Or we could have our student volunteers that put on these workshops, assign them a small group of students, and have them check up with them later on and ask them how they're doing, and have them ask if there's anything that they need help with into their freshman year. Or we could, as SAC, provide a survey that we provide online or at school sites to ask the participants of our conference how they're doing and whether they feel like the skills that we provided are helping them. So if this event was going to take place, we would need the financial means to do so, and we are asking all of you to assist us in acquiring these funds. After a thorough budget analysis, we've concluded that we would need approximately $5,000 for this event. But the $5,000 is coming from the venue, which we would possibly have at Sac State, because our advisor works there, so we have the connections to do that. Food, we would be feeding approximately 400 people at our conference. Workshop materials, so that our presenters can have something to work with to put on these workshops. Transportation, we would need about four to five buses. Publicity, so that includes parental consent forms, any flyers or literature that we provide to advertise, and any miscellaneous things for any unforeseen things that come up. Thank, I'll, thank you for listening to our presentation, and we will be answering questions now.
Okay? You're finished? I was wondering, is there someone saying, and that's all folks? Okay. Let me call on Mr. Minnick.
Okay, so first of all, great, great job. And as someone who teaches child development, I was really excited that you started off with busting out some Erickson and Piaget theory, so that was, that was pretty cool. I just had a quick clarifying question. You talked about the application process and kind of your target audience. Can you explain how you're choosing the attendees that are actually going to be attending this versus having it open to every and anyone? Thanks.
So we will be using a quota-based system, which will entail us accepting a higher population of students from middle schools that have statistically lower test scores. However, we will be reviewing all applications, and then based on the students' interest in the arts and also their needs for the resources we will be providing, they will either be accepted into the conference or not.
And then my other just, just follow-up is that what we can do is, because we can't, you know, vote on, on this item in terms of budgeting and stuff, but I, we can set up some time for, for me and maybe, you know, staff person, maybe Mr. Browning, and to kind of work with you about, around the budget and where, and look at where that, that we can figure out where some of that funding can come from, and then, and then kind of make a plan for that, if that works for you guys.
Mr. Wu?
Thank you, President. So in looking at your venue choice, and you selected Sac State because your advisor's at Sac State, were there any other alternatives in, in creating your budget? For example, did you think maybe to have it here? And then, that's my first question. And then my second question is, when do you plan to have this conference? I didn't catch the date.
So in terms of when we were planning to have it, we were planning to have it in the beginning of June, but before finals take place. And we would do that because a lot of our presenters are going to be seniors, because they're probably the most qualified to, to do these workshops, and we don't want to lose them if they're going to go off to college after the school year ends, which is why we're going to have it at the end of the school year.
So to follow up then, if you were to have the conference in June, and you're presenting to eighth graders, I think you said?
Yes, at the time they'd be.
And so there'll be the incoming freshmen?
Yes.
Okay, so you're trying to target them beforehand, so they'll be interested in participating once the school year begins?
We would have the conference at, at that time, so then they would gain this information and these skills about high school. So then, when they start high school, that, later this year, they will have those skills then.
Okay, thank you.
A member, Ryan?
Thank you, President Hanson. So I just want to tell all of the students, you did such a beautiful job presenting today. I know it's really difficult to stand in front of a group and share your thoughts, and you just, I think, were on point, and also really illustrated that, you know, in my opinion, youth-led research rocks, right? I mean, you came up with a concept, you figured out a way, a methodology for, you know, assessing whether or not your concept was in fact valid, and then I think you came up with some really strong research findings. As someone who credits myself as being very much saved by the arts, I love this idea of utilizing arts-based, youth-led education as a way to level the playing field, which is essentially what you're seeking to do. And so I found the, the data particularly around the number of years with art exposure and the correlation to verbal and math scores for the SAT to be very compelling. I also found it really compelling, the data around exposure by demographic to museums in general. We know that, you know, there is a socioeconomic divide that exists, and quite frankly, more well-resourced students end up having exposure to museums that often then open up the way they think about the world. And so I love the fact that you're looking to bring this into the middle school as part of the transition to high school, and very much support what you're doing, but also just the very sound way that you laid this out today. It was incredibly impressive and mature for your years.
Number Pritchett?
Thank you, President Hanson, and I agree with Vice President Ryan. You all did wonderful, and you can tell that you came prepared, you had a mission. One thing I did want to recommend is that, I know, I represent Rosemont High School in Area 3, and I know that usually towards the end of the year and at the beginning of the year, they have freshman days, or incoming freshman days. So I would like to recommend that you reach out to each of the high schools and find out when those days are, and ask if you can present then or have a table. That way, parents and students can come and ask questions. And then aside from the budget, I'm open to having conversations, and I think that the rest of my board members would concur, that we're open to have, open to have conversations to find out what else we can do to help support this mission. So please reach out to each of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, as you, you may know, Mr. Minnick is our official board liaison to the Student Advisory Council, so he'll be the best person to liaison with. And I would absolutely join him, and I'm sure my other members too. We each have a small board stipend that we're able to use for worthy programs in our area, and I would certainly be willing to use a portion of my stipend to support this very worthy effort. And I appreciate very much you taking the time to come here and present to us tonight and address something that's a really key issue, because one of the highest grades for dropouts, besides kindergarten, which is surprising, is also ninth grade. And I think it's directly because of the issues that you address, so you're right on target of helping your fellow students succeed. right on target of helping your fellow students succeed. Thank you very much. Item eight point O, public comment, Mr. Barrios. Do we have any folks that would like to address the board?
Yes, we do.
Can you call the first five?
Grace Trujillo.
I think somebody forgot their tape recorder, so, on the way back.
Natalie, maybe you might.
Oh, you're welcome. I wanted to make sure we got it. Good evening, members of the board, and, um, President, uh, Hanson. You know, it's funny, I was here last two weeks, and I came and complained about Kit Carson, and I think people sometimes come and complain, but never apologize when there is a mistake, and that's why I'm here for today. As my character as a person, I think I was so embarrassed of the fact that I came and I relied on a parent of what they told me. I think most of the time I never do that. This time I did, because it affected my community, and I was just outraged, and I believed her. I think I need to do further research before coming to the board and do it publicly. It's hard to come out here and say that I was, I did wrong. But you know, at that time, you ruined a person's character, an institution, a school. I know how that feels. That's why I came, because it's very important that when you do something like that, it affects a person in so many different ways. Again, Kit Carson is a school that's in my neighborhood, and it is improving. And that's not just one mistake of a parent, and for me coming and voicing my opinion, and at the same time indicating when things are not right. So I just wanted to let the, the time that Mary Hart Young called me, and I know she spent a lot of time and effort and resources that could have been spent in other areas, but as, and also the board members to know, and Mr. Banda asked her, but I wanted, I told her, "I want to come in personally and tell you guys," because I know when I come, I try to speak with reference, I try to speak with the truth, and a person's character is very, is priceless. It says, "It takes 25 years to build that character." It takes a second to run it.
Thank you. Could you please state your name for the record as well?
Grace Trujillo.
Thank you, Grace. Ellen, please, Ms. Cochran?
I'd like to personally thank you for coming up here and saying these words. I hold you in very high esteem for doing so. It's a very difficult thing to do. Thank you very much, and Kit Carson, thanks you very much.
You're welcome.
We have two more public comments. Uh, next is Nikki Milewski.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Nikki Milewski, president of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. By now, I hope you've had a chance to review the letter we sent to Human Resources regarding HIPOMD. Despite HIPOMD's distributing propaganda with this district's logo on it, um, that touts SAC City is the first district in the nation to adopt HIPOMD, we are unaware of this board ever taking such action. And if it did, we do not understand how this board could approve using district resources for private gain, a clear violation of board policy and state and federal law. Teachers are paid by this district to educate children, not to market the product of a startup, for-profit company run by a self-described serial entrepreneur who appears to have a too cozy relationship with Superintendent Banda. The implementation of HIPOMD at John Still did not involve the Director of Health Services or the area superintendent, and appears to be a rogue operation directed by the superintendent. At John Still, the pilot site, HIPOMD promised teachers $500 Visa gift cards for signing up a target percentage of their students to turn over their medical cards to HIPOMD, a for-profit entity. Today, educators are being promised $10 per student if they get them signed up for HIPOMD, with no protection if the product they are being pressured to sell fails to deliver. More importantly, the vital healthcare services so desperately needed by our students will not be provided by a school nurse. On January 22nd, 2016, the superintendent purportedly briefed GU on HIPOMD and our concerns regarding the legality of the partnership. Perhaps you can explain why he directed the Human Resources Department to refuse to meet, to process the grievance that we have filed on this subject, and why he personally refuses to participate in any meeting on the subject despite his contractual obligations to do so. Is it a coincidence that he appears to be hastily expanding the project without discussion in mere four months before he departs our district? As a part of our grievance, we ask that the contract be renegotiated to prohibit a district employee from taking a job with HIPOMD for at least five years after leaving the district. We would like to understand why the superintendent and district staff refused to make that commitment. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Teresa Hernandez. And then we have one more comment card that came in. Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Teresa Hernandez.
My name is Teresa Hernandez.
Soy madre de dos estudiantes de la escuela Luter Burbank.
And I'm a mother of two students of, uh, Luter Burbank.
Antes que nada quiero...
Before everything, I would like...
...pedir disculpas si ofendo o...
Forgiveness if I offend somebody?
Ofendo alguien. Yo soy una persona con un inglés limitado.
I'm a person with a limited English.
Y esto no ha sido motivo para que yo deje de asistir a las reuniones.
And this is not a motive for me to not assist to the reunions?
Aportando mis comentarios y sugerencias.
Giving my, my suggestions and my comments.
Lamentablemente muchas de estas sugerencias o información que se nos está dando no está siendo bien traducida.
Sadly, all this information is not well translated?
No tienen eco, y no es solo mi voz.
It's not echo, it's not only my voice.
Sino la de muchos padres que se han estado quejando de la mala traducción.
But there is a lot of complaints about, uh, a lot of the parents of the bad translation.
En las juntas del DILAC y el master plan.
And it's about DILAC and the master plan meetings.
Estoy hablando de estos dos comités.
I'm talking about these, uh, two committees.
Porque son a los que no se les ha dado buenos traductores.
It's the ones that have not given a well interpreter.
Sé que con estos comentarios me voy a...
I know with these comments, I'm going to...
Malos, me voy a crear malos enemigos.
I'm going to create more enemies.
Pero era necesario que lo supieran.
But it's needed to you to know.
Y el estar aquí no es para hablar mal de nadie.
I'm not here to talk bad about anybody.
Ni culpar a nadie.
Or blame somebody.
Es solamente para pedir, para informar.
I'm just, uh, like to be informed.
Que si tenemos el 60% de hispanos.
That if we have the 60% of the Hispanic community.
El distrito solo cuenta con tres buenos traductores.
This district only count with three good translators.
Y al igual.
And at the same time.
Que todos los padres que asisten a las reuniones.
All the parents that are coming to the meetings.
Considero que esta comunidad.
Uh, I know that this community.
Tiene la misma igualdad.
They have the same rights.
Y tiene el derecho.
And, and the rights.
Y la necesidad.
And needs.
De entenderlo a toda la información que se les está brindando.
To understand all the information that is given.
Ese es mi comentario.
This is my comment.
Y espero yo alguna solución.
Uh, there is a solution for this.
Thank you. Could you please state your name for the record as well?
Teresa Hernandez. Hoy vengo como padre.
I'm coming as a parent.
Thank you. Member Cochran?
Teresa, muchas gracias. Um, I need to ask you a few questions for clarity, because we need to know facts in order to improve things. Are you talking about the written translations or the oral translations?
Traducciones escritas o las habladas?
Las habladas. Okay. And are you speaking only about the Spanish translations?
Solo lo que es en español, ¿verdad?
Sí. Okay. And is it, um, because there are not enough translators, or is it because of the quality of the translations?
Uh, solamente hay tres profesionales.
There's only three professionals.
Y, lo demás.
The rest.
Uh, lamentablemente, de muy poca calidad.
Or low, low quality.
And is, does it have anything to do with the technology or equipment?
On the technology?
No.
No.
Okay. So, um, President Hanson, I'm not quite sure, uh, about this comment, and you can help direct it appropriately, but I would like staff to look into this and to make sure that we have high-quality translators at our DILAC meetings, of course, um, EL master plan meetings, and any meeting where a Spanish-language translator is needed, especially in these very important times, uh, especially since we're having a new superintendent search. We need full input from this community. So if you can help me out there, that'd be great.
Certainly. Thank you very much. Member Eng?
Hi, Teresa. Thank you so much for coming today. I'm not going to speak too long, because I, I think, um, a board member, Ellen Crocker, pretty much summed up the questions I was going to ask you. Um, and I was also going to ask for direction for the staff as well, but Ellen pretty much covered it. So I just want to let you know, um, that I do take your comments very seriously, um, and that we'll make sure that staff looks into it.
Thank you very much.
Como les mencioné al principio.
Like I mentioned before.
Yo hoy vengo como padre.
I'm coming as a parent today.
Porque le quiero dar el lugar.
Because I want to give the...
A los padres del comité de DILAC.
The place of all the parents of the DILAC committee.
Pero los comentarios los tengo por escritos.
But the comments I have in writing also.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sofia Garcia?
Hello. Um, it's my first time.
Just state your name and be relaxed.
Okay. My name is Sofia Garcia, and I'm a parent of three children, and they're each in three different grade levels. I have a high school, junior high, and, um, elementary. My concern is tonight is, um, all of my kids are, I hear about how drugs are really affecting their schools. My daughter tells me how there's coke and weed and alcohol and other pills at her school that are getting sold, passed around. Um, my son's in junior high, and he also tells me how there's kids that smoke weed and, you know, kids are getting offered these drugs, and I just think it's very important that we find some kind of solution to nip this in the butt. It's getting carried away. You know, our kids can't even go to school and get their education without being pressured into doing these drugs. You know, nowadays, it's not... It's not easy going to school with all these different kind of pressures, whether it be sex, drugs, um, skipping school. You know, I teach my kids that their main focus is to go to school, to learn. You know, they're only in school for so long. Um, I just think it's really important that these subjects get brought up and... Sorry. That's it. And then I have a situation with my youngest son in elementary school. There was an incident where there were pills being brought to the school, and, you know, I just feel like it's trickling down now to elementary schools. First it was high schools, now junior highs, now it's in elementary schools. I mean, someone's got to speak up for these kids and save them. You know, our streets, there's enough people out there in this world on drugs. Um... And I just feel like... I just feel like it's very important that we get the safety and involvement of parents involved in these situations. That way they could help in matters like this. That's it.
Thank, thank you very much. Mr. or Superintendent Banda?
I just wanted to say thank you for, um, the courage to get up here and, and speak in public. Um, and, and thank you for not sharing the schools, because, you know, there's something that would need to be investigated. But, that being said, we would like to be able to get your contact information before you leave, so we can follow up and, and ascertain what's going on and what's causing the concern that you have. So I'll ask Elliot, if he could, before she heads out, we get her contact info, and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you, guys. Guys, have a good night.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much for coming. Okay. Um, moving to nine point O, nine point one, charter petition renewal for SAC New Tech High School. Call Jack and Kenneth?
Good evening, Board President Hanson, esteemed board members, and, of course, Superintendent Banda. I am Jack Kramer, and I am the Director of Innovative Schools and Charter Oversight. Uh, tonight, I will be facilitating three public hearings on charter renewal, and the first of the, of the three, we have Sacramento New Technology High School. Uh, with me to my right, we have, uh, lead petitioner and principal, Kenneth Durham, and he will be making a presentation immediately after mine. Tonight's presentation, it will entail an overview of the charter school, the process of charter renewal, the purpose of public hearing, next steps, and, uh, it will conclude with a presentation by SAC New Tech. Sacramento New Technology High School, they are in their 13th year of operations. They had an opening date of July 2003. Their current enrollment is 187, serving students in the ninth through 12th grades. The school is located on district property at 1400 Dixon Street. The charter is a dependent charter. Their renewal petition was submitted on January 18th of this year, and their current charter expires June 30th of this year. The process for charter renewal, it is threefold, starting first with, uh, the submission of the actual petition itself. First milestone in essence is in the middle, which is the GO. Uh, that is, uh, public hearing, which we are holding now, and public hearing must happen within 30 days of submission of the petition. Uh, the third and final phase, it is the board action, and that must happen within 60 days of petition submission, unless there is a mutually agreed-upon 30-day extension. Tonight's, uh, public hearing, uh, it will allow the governing board to consider the level of support for the petition. It will allow for the petitioners and the public to speak regarding the charter renewal, and finally, it will allow interested parties to comment to the governing board regarding their support or opposition. The next steps, we have next steps for district staff, in which we will continue our review of previous practices and data, uh, future plans, as well as the renewal petition itself. Uh, next steps for the governing board is the board must grant or deny the charter within 60 days of receipt of this petition. At this point, board action is currently scheduled for March 16th, 2017, in essence, a month from now. Uh, please note that SAC New Tech, they have mutually agreed to a 30-day extension. Uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, bring back Kenneth, and, uh, he will present on behalf of SAC New Tech.
Uh, thank you, members of the board. Superintendent Banda? Uh, just, uh, one moment while we, uh, get our slide presentation up there. Um, we are going to have a few members of our community speak, uh, after me, and, uh, while that's getting put up there...
With that, I'd like to bring back Kenneth, and he will present on behalf of Sac New Tech.
Thank you, Members of the Board, Superintendent Banda. Just one moment while we get our slide presentation up there. We are going to have a few members of our community speak after me, and while that's getting put up there, the first slide is basically talking about the culture of the school. If you've ever visited New Tech or talked to anybody that's from New Tech, you know that the culture and the quality of relationships that have existed on the campus for the 13 years it's been in existence are second to none. I have experience working in two other school districts and three other high schools, and I've never experienced a relationship-based curriculum and student body and teaching staff that compares. But what we've been focused on for the last 14 months is how can we expand and build on that phenomenal culture of relationships and putting students first. So we've been going through the WASC charter, or the WASC renewal process and the charter renewal process for about 14 months as a staff and a community of stakeholders. And we've went through a revisioning process that culminated on October 28th of 2016, where a group of parents and students and teachers got together on a day when we didn't have school, and we hammered out what had been four months of the teams working independent of each other, coming together and creating a vision for the future for New Tech. And we borrowed from what was already great, and we added what we need to do better. New Tech is committed to focusing on the unique needs of each child, not treating them like they're the same. Yes, that creates a world where things are gray, but we're dealing with people, and we want what's best for kids. Having a safe environment that is relatively drug-free and safe for social-emotional issues and kids is what we choose to continue to do. We have a strong track record, and you'll see some data of that here in a second, but also expanding on academic success. It's an area where we are not yet serving all students in an equal fashion. Sacramento New Tech High School and the New Tech Network, which we're a member of, define college and career readiness by three things. First, students are aware. They understand the importance of life after high school, the post-secondary education. Second is that students are eligible. They're graduating, they're leaving our school, ready to enter college if that's their choice. Even if they decide to go in a different direction, they are eligible to go to a two- or four-year college. And the third is they're prepared. So students are going to graduate in New Tech, ready to enter and succeed without remediation. This is the one of the three legs that we know we need to work on. The first two, aware and eligible. These are the graduation and A to G rates for New Tech. Also up there are the district's numbers and our three comparison schools. So our kids are graduating at a rate that is on par or better with our comparable schools. Our A to G rate is phenomenal. We had a conversation in the staff this morning about where we set the bar and why, even though from time to time, we're going to meet the unique need of a learner by making an exception, that we can't lower the bar because we're getting such great results by keeping it where it's at. Next, in partnership with the New Tech Network, they mine the data annually for us, and so these numbers were taken from the...I'm sorry. I know where it is. So 94%...I'm sorry, 91% of all college universities report to a database, and these numbers are pulled from there. They track our students by cohort, they get our graduates, and they follow up with this data. So this data is representative of 91% of our graduates. They're going to college, and they're going back for their second year. Where we're falling down as a school is in the preparation. So this is the overall data, but what we see when we tore through it, when we dug down to the microscopic level, was that we are serving kids that are ready to come to school at a phenomenal rate, and we are failing to yet meet the needs of students from subgroups or student groups that are underserved historically. So we've been talking and developed a PLC model, where the teachers since October have been working with coaches from the district, and we're full bore on how do we make sure that we're addressing the needs of all learners? And that's really the focus of what we're doing the rest of this year and moving forward. So this is some school culture data that's collected annually. It's actually a composite of fall, winter, and spring data that's collected for us by the New Tech Network. At least 85% of the students on the campus, all of those years, submitted that to come up with this data. And when we looked at it, at first, we were very, very proud of it. But one of the things we're trying to do now with data is look at it and ask questions. So the question we asked when we looked at this is what can we learn? What can we do better? What does this data say that we need to do better? And when we looked at the line that says "learning experience," we saw that three in five kids thought we had a quality learning experience. They felt positive about it. But two in five thought we could do better. And so even though those are good numbers, if we look at it, two of the three years, that's the lowest mark. So we know we're on track when we're looking at preparation and how we prepare our kids. Our school is completely invested and has been in restorative practices since my arrival in the 15, 16 school year. So we averaged about 24, I think, was the average suspensions a year, the three years and last year that I was there. But one of the things we knew from the research and from all of the support that we get here from the district's secretary office was that having a kid out of school for five days or having them out of school for one day, there's no difference. And so, yes, if we need to suspend a kid for a day for a reset, we do that, but we work as quickly as we can with the community to repair the harm. Our numbers this year are equal, and one of the things when we showed this information to the staff, we asked them, we said, "I have to know, as a leader of the site, are we not addressing things? Are we sweeping it under the rug? Are there things we're not taking care of that we need to?" And the consensus from the staff was no, restorative practices are working. So I know you'll have some questions, and I'm happy to answer them, whether it's this meeting or the next, but we're really excited about where we're at. We know what we need to do moving forward, and we have the support of every department in the district that we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have three public comments, four public comments. First is Dale Means.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Superintendent. First of all, I'd like to thank the New Tech community and all the other communities for coming out to support the schools. I'm here to share with you. I've been at New Tech for the last six years. I've been teaching for 14 years. Additionally, I'm the School Advisory Board President. But beyond that, I'm a parent. My daughter is the product of a public charter school. She's in her fourth year at university. That experience served her well. My son, he'll be attending kindergarten in Sac City Unified School District next year. Our first choice is a charter school. I've seen charter schools work, both as an employee, as a parent, and I'm here to tell you that I think New Tech's a great place. I think New Tech does an excellent job offering an alternative educational option. You know, when I first started New Tech, we were doing our charter renewal last time. We were in this very room, and one of our students, I remember this because it gave me chicken skin, she stood up and she spoke how she'd switched schools and she'd come to New Tech, and what a positive experience that was for her, how it had basically changed her whole outlook. Well, that's students at UC Merced today. Last I heard, she's passing all her classes. At New Tech, we have a dedicated staff. Many of them have been there since the school opened or a couple of years after. They work tirelessly to meet the needs of our diverse learners. We have some great programs there. You know, our educational model, we're part of the New Tech Network. It's an international group of schools that has a methodology based on project-based learning. I think project-based learning and the kind of things that we do at New Tech, it offers the opportunity for students to connect the dots and apply their learning. And I've seen this firsthand, being a digital media design teacher in the design pathway, we're part of the Link Learning Certified Pathway. My students get the opportunity to do real-world projects. In each of my classes, at least once a semester, they work with a real-world client. Beyond that, we have our learning outcomes, which I think speak to trying to have well-rounded individuals that come out ready to pursue whatever they choose to post-secondary. I guess what I'd like to leave you with is, you know, look at the data, you're going to hear the testimonies of other people, is you should come out and check us out. I think it's a great place.
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
My name's Dale Means.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Norman Lorenz, followed by Hugo Hernandez and Marcela Torres.
Good evening to the Board of Sacramento City Unified School District, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Sacramento New Tech High. We are a family, actually, that has exposed exchange students to this country, four, a set of nine of them, and the current student, who is a sophomore, Toby Burkard, is here at New Tech. He is from Switzerland and was received with open arms. The small-school, family-friendly, community-based experience has been a tremendous value for his education, not to mention the match that the school has made in relationship to his technology interest. The value of the school from my standpoint, which I'll speak about two byproducts at the end, really has to do about the presentation that the student body provided this evening, that this school represents itself in a community-based, student-centered, and project-based curriculum. And, again, connecting to the byproduct at the end, that experience really provides these students with critical thinking from a leadership standpoint, that they value the importance of problem-solving, critical thinking, and decision-making. And from that standpoint, what that lends itself to is real-world problem-life experience. Parent nights are with great engagement, the value that the students have taken field study. As the prior speaker shared, the staff and faculty are very committed to the program operations. He's had a chance to experience the academic decathlon, and they competed regionally. They've gone to Los Angeles to a number of different events. And the last piece that I would say, having participated on their accreditation visit just recently, was by far, in my opinion, given my experience to the byproduct, is having worked in accreditation for years, the value of parent participation that was experienced during the time that the accreditors were here. With that, the two byproducts are that I'm actually a professor at Sacramento City College and have had opportunity to experience the graduates of Sac New Tech High, and by and large, their critical thinking is of the utmost. I'm also a charter founder of an independent charter from 2001 that resides in this particular school district, and I appreciate that partnership, as I very much appreciate Sac New Tech. And I really implore you to see through the data to recharter the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
Dr. Norman Lorenz.
Thank you very much.
Next is Hugo Hernandez, followed by Marcela Torres and Tammy Dunin.
Welcome. Please tell us who you are, and then...
Good evening, Members of the Board and Superintendent Banda. My name is Hugo Hernandez, and I am the liaison for New Tech High School, and I represent the classified staff. And on behalf of all the staff as well, I would like to thank you all, Members, for all the tremendous support you have provided at New Tech. As you have heard before, New Tech is a very close community. We are very valuable of students. We are here to support our parents and our students to meet their needs, and I just want to thank you for all the support that you have provided at New Tech over the few past years.
Very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maricela, one of the parents. My son is Gabriel Torres. I really thank New Technology to be open, whoever is in charge of open, the New Technology. I really thank whoever who started. My son, he loves the school. He's thinking to finish there. He's ten greater now. He feels safe. Whatever been happened there, happened there with his secure, the principal and whoever is around, they take care of the moment immediately. They call me right away, and even though they talk about whatever happened later on, they stick on the students and make sure what happened. And even if it's little thing, to me, it's a little thing, I really think that they really pay attention to each of the students. And even though they talk about it with me, they separate later on, each of them, and talk about more what happened, and I really think that that is safe school, and I like it. My son, his future is technology. That's why he's there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Final speaker is Tammy Dunin.
Welcome. Please give us your name and let us share your thoughts, please.
My name is Tammy Dunin. My children graduated from Sacramento New Technology High School in 2011. I saw a post on Facebook tonight saying their charter was up for renewal and rushed down. I cannot tell you enough good things about this school. What I can do is tell you about my kids. When they got to New Tech, these are not easy children to deal with. They were difficult, they each had their own issues. My daughter's first semester there, she wound up with a 1.2 GPA. I argued with her every day, and the staff and a couple of her teachers and the principal at the time said, "Stop arguing with her. She's going to get this. We're going to help her." And the very next semester, she had a 3.8, and the one after that a 4.0. On graduation, they both got accepted into several schools, and last, in 2015, they graduated from Notre Dame Dean and Mary University with honors. New Tech does more than teach kids. They nurture and they inspire. I am a very proud New Tech parent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I have a comment and then a question for Mr. Durn. So I'm very fortunate to have visited New Tech, both toured the school site, but also I've presented a couple of years in a row to the student government class, and found the young students to be engaged, to be incredibly inquisitive, and to be wonderful ambassadors of your school. Beyond that, I will tell you, and I'm looking into the audience and seeing some teachers that I had a chance to interact with, you have some of the most caring and committed teachers that I've seen in the district. So I was incredibly impressed with what the school site had to offer. I think probably my biggest takeaway from New Tech came in the form of some offline side-conversations that I had with students, where you often ask for, you know, the real dirt on the school. And what I heard from students was that they loved their teachers unequivocally, that they felt like the school was a family, that bullying didn't exist because people looked out for one another. And looking around that school, I really saw a lot of students that might not have fit in in a traditional, large high school environment. So to see students thriving in a small school where they were having their needs met and reaching their full academic potential was incredibly impressive to me. So I want to commend you and your team for the work you're doing. I will tell you my only source of concern, and it was two years ago, it was last year, and it continues to be enrollment. And I know that I've had conversations with the previous principal, and that in many ways, New Tech is like this best-kept secret, right? And that it's been challenging to grow enrollment. And so I would love to hear about how you're planning on tackling that to ensure that you have the numbers necessary to continue to be successful.
Okay. So actually, I'm proud to announce tonight that just before I came over here today, I printed 35 acceptance letters that we're mailing out tomorrow.
I printed 35 acceptance letters that we're mailing out tomorrow to future freshmen of Sacramento New Tech. While that number might seem small, it's halfway to our goal of 70 freshmen for the fall of 2017, and we started this past fall with 45. So we're very proud of the work that not only our staff, our parent community, I want to say 10 of the 35 came from parents of parents who talked to parents about the great things going on in Sacramento New Tech. Also, I've been through this process, learning from the principals of Carver and the Met about how they do enrollment, and I've learned a bunch of great things that we're getting ready to implement. We talked about it at school site council meeting last night. The superintendent has been very supportive and asked me to schedule a meeting, which I talked to his secretary last night about, to come talk to cabinet specifically about things that we need to do and support that we need. So really, it's engaging the community, not feeling like this is a job I have to and need to do by myself, knowing that if it's left to me, I'll fail, but if I include the stakeholders in the New Tech community, we'll get there. Good luck.
Have you?
Thank you, President Hanson. I as well concur with Vice President Ryan. I've heard great things, and I've had the opportunity to visit your school. In fact, I helped mentor a student there and who is now an employee of our district and working at one of our comprehensive high schools. So that was great to see them moving on and keeping within the family. I do want to ask a question about your slide that you had regarding the A through G requirements. I don't know if you can click back to show that slide? So I noticed that on your other slides, you had mentioned what the percentage rates were for the 15-16 school year. I'm just wondering why the 15-16 school year is not on here? Is it because those numbers have not been released, or...?
We have our numbers that we can pull out of impotent campus, but they're not the ones that have been verified by CalPats yet. And in my, in the charter document, both in WASC and the charter document, I think I had that tag underneath that 15-16 was not yet available from the state.
Okay. All right. That's a good explanation. Thank you. And I'm glad to hear that you're reaching out to our other charters as well and asking for advice on how they're doing great things. Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you to everyone who came out tonight and supported this charter.
Mr. Wu?
Thank you, President Hanson. Vice President Ryan kind of stole my thunder in asking the questions regarding enrollment. I'm glad you have a plan. I am glad to see that your numbers are up. It is our desire, the members here on this dais, to see that those of our students who meet the A through G requirements, and we'd like to get it closer to 100%, of course, but for those who meet the A through G requirements when they go to UC and CSU, that they need no remediation. So we want them to make the requirements, and we want them to have a solid foundation with respect to those, with those requirements. And I'm glad, every year, I'm proud to have been able to give the commencement speech for the last six years, and I hope to continue to do it for a long time. I'm proud of the graduates, and I can see the enthusiasm in the teachers. They are very, very, they're like, you could not ask for another better set of second parents than our teachers there at New Tech. And you can see the pride in the staff and the pride in the parents, and it really is that family feeling. And since you arrived at New Tech, I could see the improvement, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This is a conference item, so we will take this up for a vote at our subsequent meeting. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you for everyone who came and joined in support this evening. Before we move to item 9.2, I neglected to have a... Member Natalie Rosas read our important talking points for this evening.
Thank you. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, February 19th, at 9:00 a.m. Monday, February 20th, at 6:00 p.m., and webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please fill out a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative prior to the conclusion of the items presented. Please also speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rosas. Item 9.2, we will do the charter renewal for George Washington Carver, Mr. Kramer, and Allegra Alessandri. Welcome.
This will be the second of the three public hearings for charter renewal, and this time, we have George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. To my right, I have lead petitioner and principal, Allegra Alessandri, and she will be providing a presentation immediately after mine. Well, Groundhog Day, so it'll happen this time, it'll happen the next time. We have the contents, and for this presentation, the contents are essentially the same. George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science, they have been in operations for 13 years, and their charter school, their opening date was July 2003 as America's Choice High School. However, in 2007, there was an approved material revision for them to become George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. Their current enrollment is 333, serving ninth through 12th grade students. Carver is located on district-owned property at 10101 Systems Parkway. The charter school is a dependent charter. Their renewal petition was submitted on January 18th, and their current charter expires June Their process for charter renewal is the same. And the purpose of tonight's public hearing, once again, same. And the next steps for district staff and governing board, same, with a strong note of board action date currently scheduled for March 16th, and also noting that Carver has also mutually agreed to a 30-day extension. With that, I'd like to bring Allegra up to provide a presentation on behalf of Carver.
Thank you. What do I do to get mine going? She'll do it. Okay. Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, and members of the Board. Our goal tonight is to open a window for you, to look into our living and lively community that will enhance your review of our written charter petition. George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science is the first public Waldorf high school in the United States, was born out of a school reform effort beginning in 2002 until our opening in 2008. Proudly, Sacramento City Unified School District is the only district in our nation to house public EK through 12th grade, public Waldorf education. In our Waldorf high school, we strive to educate the whole human being. At Carver, our goal is to foster in our students the interest and ability to become fully-engaged citizens in social and environmental justice issues. The high school curriculum addresses the various stages of adolescent development through academic themes and integrated projects. Arts are integrated throughout the curriculum and are a medium for self-expression and critical thinking. Our motto, "How will you engage the world?", is one that comes alive through the four, throughout the students' four years in high school, and I couldn't be more grateful for the Student Advisory Council's presentation earlier, which I think provides a lot of the research and background to our program. I'd also like to acknowledge our fabulous students, faculty, and community members who are here tonight. You will see from our data in the charter documents that you'll review that our students do well by many measures. Students in our subgroups outperform their counterparts in similar schools, a fact supported by the Stanford University Scope Study published last year. But for us, the real accountability is what students do after high school, our students' college-going rates. 75% of Carver graduates go on to two- and four-year colleges, and UCs, CSUs, community colleges, and our first graduates have graduated from college last June, from Berkeley, Davis, Socha, Yersinus, Humboldt-Chico, UC Santa Cruz, and many more. Nearly 50% of our seniors enter college as second semester freshmen because they have earned up to 18 units of Sacramento State University credit through our ACE program. Another 20% enlist in the military, serving our country, another form of social justice. And our data bears out the social justice success for each and every student at Carver. Is this going to start? It's this slideshow. No sound. Thank you. Students succeed at Carver because we give them the time and space to make and create and think. Art and creative expression permeate our curriculum from English and history to math and science. Having many opportunities to make and create develops students' creative and critical thinking. It develops their willpower to persevere, their stick-with-it-ness and their grit. Making things connects the hand, eye, and brain in a very special way. It's empowering for both the maker and the viewer. The act of making is optimistic. It's an act of faith. People of all ages feel better for doing it. At Carver, this is art. In the theater, it's acting, designing and building sets, creating lighting and sound effects. It's planning and laying irrigation in the garden and caring for chickens. It's growing and preparing food to feed the students, and it's our academic projects of all kinds, like the electric vehicle project. Are we having difficulty with the slideshow moving? Well, if you turn it down low, I can talk louder. I can use my teacher voice. I want you to see those beautiful pictures. There it goes. Some of our academic projects, like the electric vehicle project, supported by our community partners at SMAD, PG&E, and the American River College Clean Diesel Program. Our students engage in rigorous, challenging Socratic seminars. We incorporate discussions of current events and controversial issues with discussion of current, local, national, and international issues and events that are important to the students. Engaging students in civil dialogue about controversial issues provides opportunities to foster character and civic virtue, important civic dispositions that are the habits of the heart and mind conducive to healthy functioning of our democratic system. These virtues include civility, open-mindedness, compromise, and the embrace of diversity. These virtues are prerequisites for a civic life in which students can work out the meanings of their democratic principles and values. These are tools to engage the world. At Carver, we are thinkers and creators. Creating and making can also be very social, and it fosters social-emotional development. Conversations can meander while hands are kept busy making and creating. But it can also be very personal and give confidence to students who listen to their own internal monologue that takes place as they make and create in solitude. Imagine teenagers unplugged and lost in thought, listening to their inner creative selves. These are rare opportunities in today's media-saturated society that is essential to building safe, caring, and empathetic communities. If we want a world full of creative and entrepreneurial thinkers, we need to enable and sustain making, doing, thinking, and creating. Not all of us will become sculptors, or engineers, or designers, but we will become more connected and rounded and healthy human beings. These opportunities for creativity also help our students experience great responsibility for inner individual freedom, the ultimate education of our civic engagement and our shared democracy. I thank you for your consideration of our charter petition renewal, and we will have some time to hear from other community members.
Thank you very much. Any public comment?
We have four in public comment. First is Scott Preston, followed by Jade Thomas, followed by Kelly McNeely-Nutting, and David Espinoza.
Thank you. Please state your name and share your thoughts.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Banda. Thank you for having us here tonight. I genuinely appreciate it. I am Senior Scott Preston, Spanish teacher. Well, that is one of the many different subjects that I teach, skills and subjects I teach at Carver. Like all of the teachers, we all wear many different hats. We not only teach our own subject matter, I Spanish, for example, but twice a year, we engage in a traditional Waldorf methodology known as the main lesson, where we engage in a focused, four-week-long, deep dive into a particular subject that would be related to our own subject. For example, I, as a Spanish teacher, engage in a four-week main lesson focused on ancient Mesoamerican history. One of our math teachers engages in an astronomy lesson, and we all contribute our knowledge and skills to expand our students' knowledge on these various subjects two times a year. Aside from all of this, we engage in an ongoing, year-long, integrated project, which we use cross-curricular activities in terms of engaging our students, which will then culminate in a grand presentation at our end-of-the-year open house, to which I am now inviting all of you to attend Thursday evening, May 4th, at 6:00 p.m. We would love to see you there, so that you can come and see the culmination of our students' hard work throughout this year as they create this integrated project around our linked learning pathway of social and environmental justice. I am one of seven founding teachers that are still at the school in the ninth year of our existence, still carrying the Waldorf education torch. Five of our teachers have been with us since the second year. In addition, we have two former student teachers that are now full-time faculty. Carver truly is a place where teachers invest their time and energy and grow as professional educators. During all this time, I've engaged in yearly professional growth opportunities through the Rudolph Steiner College, through our own in-house Waldorf education seminar for teachers, the West Waldorf Teacher Training Program. I've engaged in the ASPIRE Administrative Leadership Seminars here, and multiple other professional development opportunities, as have all of our teachers. I am not alone in this pursuit of personal and professional growth. All of us at Carver are continually pushing ourselves to learn more about their particular curricular areas, as well as engaging in personal growth outside of their curricular areas. We have published authors, professional-quality artists, community activists, as well as classroom innovators as part of our faculty at Carver. We do all of this, all of this, in order to assist our students in pursuit of their own academic and personal pursuits. Carver is a school where students learn to think critically, solve problems, grow their communication skills, express themselves creatively, and develop leadership skills. Through our linked learning pathway of social and environmental justice, we offer students real-world professional experiences. Through the Watershed Project, our seniors engage in water usage audits, create projects that benefit our local watershed environment, and engage with the community in order to present these projects in a professional atmosphere. Through the Poverty Project, our students engage the community about this very important social issue of homelessness and the impacts of poverty right here in our own Sacramento community. And through the local hub of Access Sacramento, our local cable access channel, we have developed a Tri-Caster green-screen studio where students practice videography, sound, and film editing... a Tri-Caster green-screen studio where students practice videography, sound and film editing, studio lighting, sound production, public speaking, visual storytelling, and interviewing skills. So as you can see, the teachers at Carver are personally invested in assisting our students to reach their own full potential and become contributing members to the greater Sacramento community. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, senor.
De nada. I think now we will hear from some students.
As he's walking away, I just wanted to note that I'd love to be there May 4th, but it's a school board night. So...I'm happy to miss school board.
I think I might be missing that meeting.
Well, we'll draw lots to see who can go. Mr. Barrios?
Next is Jade Thomas.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Jade Thomas, and I'm a senior at Carver, and I've been here for all four years. I came from a relatively large middle school in Los Angeles, so my—because of my experience there, I came from a really different background than the Waldorf education and just going to a smaller school in general. But I can proudly say that because of my experiences at Carver, I'm the person that I am today and with the opinions that I have today. Because of the small community, we are able to create close-knit relationships, not only with our peers, but also with our teachers. And because of the dedication and passion shown in the classrooms, it has really encouraged me going into—to go and pursue my college dreams and goals further than that as well. The Waldorf aspect sees me for more than a student who just focuses on test scores, but rather as a human being who has personal opinions and a possibility to make a difference in the world. The curriculum has challenged me and shifted me away from my personal comfort zone. It has allowed me to explore and connect with different world issues, whether or not I necessarily would agree with them or would even interact with them without the school. Along with this, I've been able to explore different opinions that differ from mine or my own background—my own personal background, which has in turn opened me up to a world of different viewpoints and realizing that the world isn't just one side or another side, which I feel is very important, not only for modern time periods, but just in general. With the help of the Carver community, I was able to—with the help and support from the Carver community, I was able to get into Vassar College with a full-ride scholarship for all four years. But because of my experiences there and my connections with the teachers and the people that I've known throughout all my four years, I can proudly say that I'm prepared as a college student and prepared to even engage in the rest of the world. So hopefully you would consider this for the Carver charter renewal.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Kelly McNeely-Nutting.
My name is Kelly McNeely-Nutting, and I'm a parent at George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. And I didn't begin there with my children. I began, actually, about twenty years ago, showing up on a tuition-based private Waldorf school's front door, saying, "How do I do this?" Because I had come across information on Waldorf education and knew that I wanted it for my children. So for the past seventeen years, we've been involved in private Waldorf education, and my daughter, Haven, started ninth grade at Carver this year. And that was our family's choice, and actually, a lot of it was her choice. She's a fiery redhead, so yeah, so she made that choice. And we have been more than thrilled. I didn't know what to expect, and coming from what we had from our other two children, it has been a blessing. The family dinner night conversations are engaging. They're around social justice and environmental justice issues. She is even educating her older brother, who is twenty, and her older sister, who just turned eighteen yesterday, around these issues as well. And as a family, that means a lot to us. And the—just how engaging, I think, the teachers are, how they integrate into the curriculum, those themes throughout. She comes home and talking about biology, comes home and is talking about subjects that she never talked about before. And we kind of sit sometimes with our mouths hanging open a little bit during those family dinner nights, like, is this our daughter? So with that said, that's all I can say. We're really happy. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad for Carver. Go Carver! Right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is David Espinoza, followed by Grace Trujillo.
My name's David Espinoza. I'm a parent of a sophomore that's currently attending Washington Carver. My son has been on an IEP for most of his school years. He struggled both academically and socially in elementary school. And for middle school, we found a Waldorf-inspired middle school, which really helped him academically, but he still struggled socially. And when he—when we were looking for the right high school for him, we attended one of the visitation days at Washington Carver, and I was taken aback at how engaged the students actually were during the class. I had—I had been to a few other visitor days at schools, and this one just seemed very different. I was inspired myself by how much the—how much the students were engaged in class and paying attention, volunteering. I'd see the art on the walls, and it seemed like the right school for him. So we were able to get him into Washington Carver. After struggling academically for elementary and middle school, he was able to make the honor roll at Washington Carver. He really likes the school. The environment and culture of the school is very welcoming, and the faculty and staff are also very encouraging. Recently, my wife told me that on the way to school one day, he had commented on how much he actually liked the school and liked going to the school. This was unprompted and without asking. He just came out and said it. And yeah, so he's doing all good.
Great. Thank you so much.
Grace Trujillo.
I wish I could say—I think I approached all the board members to attend Washington Carver. And I apologize if I was a little bit aggressive. I know with Mike, "Your daughter should go." I could see a perfect fit. But then afterwards—I felt like, oh, shoot, I think I—I went overboard on that. But I appreciate—I know Jane, Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Wuwen, and Ryan. We've been communicating, and I know Mia as well, too, trying to figure out the right dates and times and all that. And Mike, but he said, "They'll promise you, Grace. We'll go to it." Let me tell you, it is a true, true diamond. I cannot say more about the faculty. I cannot say more about the principal and the climate of—when you go in there, you feel the acceptance. As you guys know, my son has a lot of disabilities. You know, he does not talk. Just recently, he has. I know he says a lot of stuff. For other people, it might be difficult. But the school knows, and I think the teacher does, too. He might not be saying the truth. He might not be saying complete sentences, but he's talking. And to me, it means a lot. He just started doing this in this environment, because before, in the past, he didn't have the culture. He didn't have the opportunity, and they didn't want to work with him. And I have to praise the principal for giving him that opportunity, for allowing him to go on field trips, for allowing him to adjust his schedule. These tears are not tears of pain, but tears of joy. Because a person does not understand until you walk in my shoes the struggles we've had with Andrew. I know for some people, they say—he says all these things that are not true, but guess what? He's communicating, and I know with time, he will say the truth, and he will be successful. It's just with time. So thank you. I can—I can—again, I try to hold back the tears, but I think they come back because I speak with the heart, and sometimes I try to hold back. But I guess the best way to do it is by being truthful. In this truth, I have to praise all the teachers. I know Andrew always talks about Ms. Fay and about the chickens and the art teachers. So thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you very much, Grace. Member Pritchett.
You would call me right after that. Okay, I'm beginning myself real quick. Okay, I don't have any questions. I just have comments. First off, I feel so very blessed and lucky to have Carver in my community, and it really truly is a diamond in the rough. And it is prevalent throughout—in that community where people talk about Carver. They know that of what—the great work that you guys are doing there. And I just want you to know that it's getting out there. People are really getting it. So, um, sorry, I'm still kind of—um, I've had the opportunity of going to your school several times, and some of the things that really stick out in my mind are working so closely with your students and teachers and community members. I see Morgana sitting in the audience back there, and working on the gun range issue. And, you know, we did call—we sat in a classroom and called people in the neighborhood. We were out picketing in front of the city hall in Rancho Cudova. I met with several of your students one-on-one, and you are growing artists, you are growing advocates, you are growing well-rounded children. And you almost made me want to, like, go back to high school again with that speech that you did earlier. I was like, "I want to go there." You should be very proud of the work that you guys are doing. And Grace, thank you so much for being persistent with my board members and getting them out there. And those that have not already been out there, I'd be more than happy to do a field trip with you and come and visit. And I'm kind of bummed to hear that the—the open house is on—or on May 4th. That's okay. I still plan on being there, but I would really love for eventually my board colleagues to see the things that happen at the open house, because I've witnessed Indian dancers and beautiful photos and art and skits that they do and songs. And it's just—I—every time I go to Carver, I always walk away feeling so good, knowing that the work that's being done there is making these children just—I can't even put words to it, just well-rounded children. So, um, and you can really tell by the people that come out here tonight, and when you talk to people in the neighborhood or you visit the school, you can tell that the work that you do and the work they do—you all love what you do. And it's—you can really tell with the kids and how they feel about their school. So, um, so I would definitely be there, and I can't wait to be there. I did have one question that's totally unrelated, but are we having a crab feed? Because I would have liked to invite them to the crab feed, and they could have learned, "Okay, we'll get them to something else." So I can't wait till—to bring this back. And thank you again for the lovely presentation and the video, and I love that we ended on the courage, because I know that when I go to your school, I feel courage. Sometimes I put myself in their—your student shoes, because when I was their age, I didn't have that courage. It really took me growing and stepping out of my comfort zone, and that's what you're teaching them. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Also, just to add to my words of thanks, it was a pleasure to meet you, and a thanks to Grace for talking to me about it for at least two years. And I absolutely had to go. I was very excited to have the opportunity to go there and get to meet your students all day long, and they really were remarkable. And visit with your teachers and listen to their lectures, very impressive. So it was a really wonderful experience. So this is a conference-first reading item, so we will be back at our next board meeting for our vote. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kramer, you can stay there, and we'd like to bring Principal Wolf. Thank you for joining us today. Mr. Wolf, all the way from Southside Park. Appreciate you making the long trek.
Third and final public hearing on charter renewal. This time, the Met Sacramento High School. And reintroducing lead petitioner and principal, Vince Wolf. And he will present as well after my presentation. Content will remain the same as before. The Met Sacramento High School, they have been in operations for thirteen years with an opening date of July 2003. Their current enrollment is 286, as a—serving ninth through 12th grade students. They are located on district-owned property at 810 V Street. The charter is dependent. Their renewal petition was submitted on January 18th with a charter expiration date of June 30th, 2017. The process for charter renewal for the Met is the same as the others, as is the purpose of tonight's public hearing. Next steps for district staff and governing board, that remains the same. Once again, please note the sixty-day timeline for board action, and board action is currently scheduled for March 16th. Also, the Met, they have mutually agreed to a thirty-day extension as well. With that, I'd like to bring up Vince to do the presentation on behalf of the Met.
Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Bonda, and board members. I'm Vince Wolf, principal of the Met High School. So I'll go ahead and get started, and the slide will come on and surprise you. So the motto of our school is "One Student at a Time." And we're part of the big-picture learning philosophy, and I'm going to highlight some of those points right now. Relevance: Our students have internships two days per week where they pursue their interests. Rigor: At internship sites, students do real-world projects. I'm going to show you some of those in a few minutes. And use critical thinking skills to complete those projects. They also do content area courses on campus. Relationships: Students are part of a cohort advisory for four years with the same advisor, and they also build relationships with adults in the community at their internships. So when students leave the Met, they have a network of professional adults that they've been working with. And then assessment: In addition to traditional assessments, such as essays and traditional tests, students do four exhibitions per year. And those are attended by family, peers, their mentor from their internship site, and their advisor. And they have to demonstrate their work from the previous quarter with evidence. Types of students that we serve: Anyone that walks through the door, and that includes these groups. We have students who come to the Met because they want something different. Maybe they want a smaller school. Maybe they want a school with more project-based learning. And then we have students who come because they're bored or unmotivated in traditional environments, they're struggling. We have students that struggle from grades, anxiety, bullying, discipline issues. This year, we've had four students come to us from—I believe all four were from out of district, because they're dealing with transgender issues and struggling a little bit at the bigger schools. And I did put that footnote down at the bottom. Forty-seven percent of our graduates from last year, so almost half, came to us after the start of 10th grade year. And of those, about three-quarters were not A to G-ready when they came to the Met, and they had an average of six Ds or Fs on their transcript. And I say that because particularly in the current political climate, sometimes there's ideas about charter schools, cherry-picking, or filtering, and I think some of that is a valid concern, but the Met could not be further from that. I also had that last bullet, that we have students from inside and outside of our district. So we sometimes have students come from district high schools who need a change or are struggling. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what our mentors are saying. So our students are at internship sites. We have over 250 active mentors right now in Sacramento, Davis, Folsom, et cetera, who are working with our students in every career cluster. And this is what they report, that students— students are engaging adults in conversation about learning and work and that students are initiating collaboration with others to accomplish learning and work. And these are, this is, I'm extremely proud of this. I firmly believe that these are things that are difficult to practice inside of a classroom and the best way to have students have the opportunity to practice is get them out there doing this real work. Mentors also reported that students became deeply immersed and engaged in the work over time. As we all know, when you're doing projects, they take time and you run into hurdles and there's struggles and there's, there's pitfalls and you work through them and you have to talk to different people and use different resources and that, that's really the work we do in, in our work and our life, projects. I always say, getting married is a project, buying a house is a project, planning a camping trip is a project. So, it's not just work in life. I think people that can manage and deal with, with these things are going to be successful and happy. And the final, that mentors reported that students creatively address challenges in the work and creativity and innovation go hand in hand and innovation is certainly something that the real world is looking for. It's my favorite slide, I'm going to go quick through it, but this is students of ours at internships, various internships. I wish I could show you all 250, but that would take a while. Okay, this slide, there's way too many words on it. If I was doing my exhibition right now, Met students would tell me this is out of control and you need to limit the number of words and I get that. But I felt compelled to, you know, I wanted to illustrate the diversity of projects that are going on at our school and this is a very small sample, projects and internships. So, you'll notice bolded, that's the project and underlined is the actual place where the project is happening. I'm just going to go through a few here. We have a student that tests thresholds for equipment used by the US military. We have a student currently creating an after-school program for Oak Park students. We have a student who went to Belize at the end of his sophomore year. He's been with the Bohart Museum at UC Davis for entomology. We have students with managing social media. We had a young lady, a ninth grader, who's running a fashion show that focuses on different body types, genders and ethnicities for her site and restoring a satellite recovery vehicle, that is awesome. We have a student starting a foundation with a law office. She's a senior and she has already been offered a job there and these, and they go on and on. And I think for me, this is the thing I'm the most proud of and part of the reason for that is every student that leaves the Met does this kind of work and they leave with this kind of work in their pocket and on their resumes. I'm going to go through quickly some other projects we have ongoing. We have a makers group, it's a partnership with UC Davis and it targets students of color, low-income students and female students because those students are underrepresented in the STEM fields. Here's some students receiving watershed project award. We use a participatory budgeting process. To me, it's the true spirit of the LCAP where seniors in their government classes come up with proposals for how we're going to spend money and the whole community actually votes on how we spend that money. We carve some money out from our budget and we use it and allocate it and we get great ideas from that. Here's some students dissecting a shark in biology. It was 102 degrees that day. I'm glad you can't smell this slide because it was, it was something else, but they stuck with it. Here's some students from our Renaissance music group after their concert. We have the band, the Met Band, they play out in public, you know, in Met style, they go and do real work. They play hip-hop, blues, funk and, and they're, it's an after-school program. And then here's just a few of the other ones that I don't have time to go into, but we have a lot of extracurriculars going on. I wanted to quickly mention this, our improvement in our CASP scores from year one to two was significant and it put us in a really good position. The thing I'm most proud of and that we were very intentional about is if you look at the darker colored math score for standard not Met and how much we were able to cut that down and that was really our focus. And this is work we need to continue. We are not there yet, but, but we're proud of what we've done. We have a dual enrollment program with Sac City College. On the right column there, you're going to see the percentage of our students that are taking City College courses while attending the Met. We have two courses offered on our campus and many more students going off-campus. This is great, not just for the numbers there, but a lot of our students have never been to college, or sorry, their families have never been to college and one way to break that barrier is get a student into college and see that they can do it. Speaking of college, these were our acceptances from last year out of 70 students. You can see the diversity of schools there. UC, CSU's and out-of-state. One of the teachers at our school told me I had to mention St. John's because he thinks it's the best school. We had a student get in last year and another one will probably get in this year. And on that note, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Public comments?
We have seven public comments. If you could line up since there's so many speakers, that'd be great. We're going to start first with Councilmember Jay Chenier, followed by Lourdes Jackson, Chico Gonzalez, Gino Ramirez, Dominic Volpatti, Lynn Milstein and David Fisher. If you could line up in that order, please.
Mr. Chenier, welcome to our house.
Thank you for having me. Brings back old memories. So, it really is a pleasure to be here, members of the board. I have been involved with the Met actually since I picked up Beth Kay from the airport, who was the first principal, a year before we actually started the school when I was in one of your seats. And I just think it's a wonderful school. For the last six years, I've had at least what, one Met intern in our council office and they've done fabulous work. Principal was just talking about creating an after-school program for Oak Park, that's Catherine, who's currently working in my office. And then we've also had, in my, my daytime consulting job, we've had a number of Met students over the years as well. They've done fabulous work, they are adults, we love them and we give them great responsibility and they take it and run with it. Recently, I also had the occasion from my work to bring about 20 individuals, this was three weeks ago. We brought 20 folks from nonprofit educational organizations who do statewide advocacy to the Met for a day. And we talked to the kids, we saw a lot of their projects, spent probably about five hours at the school and they all walked away thinking this was one of the best things they saw, including our program officer from the Hewlett Foundation. So, helps us get a little bit more money in the, in the long-term and hopefully for the Met as well. So, I hope that you will renew this, this is a real treasure. I know when we started it, we were thinking 100 kids and you're up to close to 300, which is just fabulous, a little bit different than the model around the country, but it certainly works here and it works for the young people and I'm happy to support and will continue to support it as we go forward. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Lourdes Jackson is next.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Lourdes Jackson. I'm an 11th grader at the Met High School. I started off at McClatchy, but going to the Met has been a big change for me in my personality and in my personal life. My advisor, Grace, she has been great. She has helped me through a lot. She is my friend, she is my other mother that is at school. I love being at the Met, I love their internship program. I feel like that's very beneficial to all the students. We get to go out and experience real-life careers that we want to go into. Being at the Met helped me with time management and organizations. Before, I was a wreck with that. I, I don't, I didn't even know what it was until going there. Grace got me a planner so I can write down all my homework assignments and I can just write down little notes and just having that, having that on my shoulders, having people that really do care and love me is just beautiful. I thank the Met. Thank you, Lourdes.
Chico Gonzalez?
Buenos dias, good evening. My name is Chico Gonzalez and I'm here to support the Met Sacramento High School. I have been involved with the Met Sacramento High School for the past 12 years as a former mentor, as a community activist and as an artist. And for the past six years, I've been involved as a faculty member. Prior to my tenure at the Met, I was teaching in higher education at Sacramento State University and at UC Davis. And I was teaching primarily first-generation, first-year college students and a lot of our students are coming unprepared, students of color. And around that time, I decided that I was doing more at the high school system and being familiar with the Met, I decided that I wanted to teach there. So, I went down in pay, but what I, what I did is I earned a teaching credential at the same time that I was teaching and like I said, you know, I've been there for six years, I've graduated two classes. And I'm really proud to say that I play an important role in those students going to four-year universities and to two-year universities and so my students joined the workforce with a plan. And that's something that, that is very, very beautiful about the Met, that we have the advisory model, which is the key to create a family type, type of atmosphere and that, that model has served very well at the Met. And I can tell you that my students, I have, they have become part of my extended family and I've, I've become part of their extended family and I'm in touch with them even to this day, the ones I've graduated in the past. And I use those students that are colleges, are colleges and universities throughout California to take more students so they can see students that look like them that are making it in college. Vince was talking about our Panther Pipeline Program with Sac City Unified School, with Sacramento City College. One of my students took so many classes through Sac City that she graduated from Mills College in three years. She saved about $70,000 for that year and now she's back here. So, I just want to say that the Met works and I hope you consider that tonight. Thank you.
Gino Ramirez?
How's the board doing?
Very well, thank you.
Hope everybody's good. Grateful to be here. Thanking God for not making me a basketball, I'm a human being. Thankful for life. A little background about me before I came to the Met. Honestly, don't remember anything positive that I learned besides getting mixed up with a whole bunch of drama and a whole lot of females. I was that kid hanging with the wrong crowd, doing the wrong things. Just, just really going through it. It actually took me to get into real trouble for me to realize that's not the lifestyle for me. So, I decided to get away from that and my escape was the Met. And best decision I made in my life. Even though it was different, nobody looked like me, such a diverse community. I, I adjusted fast and I got comfortable within the first few days. The first day, I remember the first day was, it was a fresh start for me, it was a new beginning, like the beginning of a new life. And as I began living that productive lifestyle that the Met offered, I grew through life rather than just going through life, you know? What I mean by that is I'm now in a position to succeed and actually find myself. I, at the Met, the opportunities are endless. For example, me being here in front of you guys, opportunity that I took. Another example is the opportunity to have an internship. I intern at a fashion institute and it's called AG Fashion Institute. My mentor's name is Ms. AG. So far, I've designed clothes, flyers and logos. I actually designed this logo right here. She wanted me to bring back a 10-year-old brand, make it hip for the, for the teenagers Right now, I'm preparing for this fashion show that's going to happen in the summer. I designed a flyer for a model search and also a kickoff that we're having this Saturday and I posted it on my social media to open up our opportunity for my young people and my community and really just interacting with my youth. And it feels good giving back opportunities because at, being at the Met, that's all I get is just opportunities. So, really that, that's what it's all about, giving back, gaining real-life experience and experimenting. I also make music. There's a studio at my school. I see it as a form of expression. I'm expressing myself through fashion as well as music. And, well, I found my interest being at the Met, playing around with different stuff. I, I, I'm, nevermind. Because of the Met system, I have been blessed with so many opportunities. They have guided me on the pathway to finding myself and still, day by day, I'm revealing new interests. And honestly, it wouldn't be the case if, if I hadn't gone to this school. The Met honestly saved me and changed my life. So, I thank the principal, the students and the teachers there really played a huge part in my growth. Thank you.
You please introduce yourself, too?
My name is Gino Ramirez.
Very well, thank you.
Pick me up on YouTube.
All right. We'll be looking.
Dominic Volpatti?
Good evening. My name is Dominic Volpatti. I'm a senior at the Met. I want to talk to you about why I came to the Met and what it's done for me and my experience there. In middle school, I was not a good student. I was, my parents were afraid that I would not get through high school. I was on a bad path. I moved from middle school to a small private school and it was a good, it was a good fit for me at the time. It really, I think it got me back on track, but I grew restless of it. It was very small, there wasn't many opportunities available to me. I wanted to branch out, do more with my education, meet more people. So, I decided I didn't want to go to a large school, like a giant high school. I shouted at the Met, I thought it would be a good fit for me and I was right. I moved into the Met for junior year and one of the first things I did when I got to the Met was I joined the music program. I've been a drummer for 10 years, so I really wanted to be involved in music, which the Met gave to me. Through the music program, I have made tons of connections through my band teacher, Pat. He's hooked me up, I'm in a couple bands outside of school now, I'm doing paid gigs around the town. I've met a lot of cool people in the music industry and it's really become a huge part of my life and that would have not been the case if I was not at the Met. My internship too, I intern at an advertising agency called Golden State Media Concepts. I came in when the business was only a month old and I was their second employee. There's two owners, I was the second employee there, so the fourth person there. And they've given me so many roles, they've really put trust in me. I've built a great relationship with them. They call me like their second son almost. And they trusted me with being the lead producer of podcasts. They do podcasts, they have 27 of them and they've trusted me with post-production of about half of them. And it's really just been an excellent experience, the internships. I've learned how to like interact in an office environment, in a more professional environment, which I definitely didn't have any experience with. And I was worried about getting through high school now, I've been accepted into three universities so far. My first choice is UC Berkeley and I'm optimistic about it where my grades are at this point. And the Met really has just changed my path. I totally believe it's changed my path and how I'm going to do in the future. Thank you.
Very much.
Laney Milstein?
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Laney Milstein, I am the parent of Abby Milstein, currently a senior at the Met. When Abby was entering high school, there really was no real consideration of what high school she would go to. The neighborhood high school where her older sister had graduated from and my alma mater was the logical default. What we never really considered and apparently had to learn the hard way is that not all kids will be successful in the one-size-fits-all learning environment of a traditional high school. As Abby wrote in one of her college essays, "I felt completely lost on a big high school campus and lacked any sort of motivation to try and find my way. The truth is, I didn't care about my academics and I didn't put any effort into my schoolwork." She was incredibly unhappy and our efforts to engage the school to address her needs went completely unaddressed and it showed in her grades. Well into her freshman year, Abby was a solid C student. When she told me in May of her freshman year that she couldn't stand another year at Rio Americano, I began looking alternatives. I began looking at alternatives. But she was way ahead of me and had already discovered the Met. In fact, she called me one day and she said she wanted to go visit the campus. And not having a license, I said, "Okay, we'll go down there and check it out soon." Her response on the cell conversation was that she was already there, having gotten on a bus and taken the light rail to get there on her own. Again, from her college essay, "As I walked around the campus, I knew I had found the place for me. My impromptu visit symbolized a new form of self-motivation and independence. I was finally starting to make decisions for myself and taking control of my educational experiences. I decided that day to transfer, and the following year, I was a student." The Met's learning model, the internships, the accountability to the learning goals through exhibition and gateway processes, and the ability to engage at an even higher level by taking college classes, I know have changed Abby's life forever. I always knew she was smart and capable, and that's not just the parent talking. But now she knows she is and is a self-motivated, solid A student. If you had asked me three years ago if in February 2017 Abby would be waiting on the status of her college applications and if we would be having philosophical conversations about where she might choose to go and what she might choose to study, do I focus on a specific career like nursing or go into a field of study like neurobiology, which is just super interesting, but maybe there's no set career at the end? I honestly never could have imagined that then. The Met has been transformational, not only for Abby, but for the sanity of our entire family. Because seriously, an unhappy, unfocused teenager is truly a force to be reckoned with. This school provides a true learning community, and I couldn't be prouder to be speaking on behalf of their charter renewal tonight. Thank you.
Very much.
David Fisher.
Welcome, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening. I'm David Fisher, First Vice President of SCTA and a parent of two children in the district. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was sitting out there and hearing all these inspiring stories about these three very innovative and creative schools. And that got me thinking about, you know, what we can do with this district and what's capable. And I don't know, maybe it's an obvious point, or maybe it's not, but I'd just kind of like to point out that all this happens within the public school system, where some of the rhetoric out there sometimes talks about not enough quote-unquote "choice," right? So we have these three great schools. We have big schools. We have small schools. We have Waldorf schools. We have dual immersion mung. We have dual immersion Cantonese, Spanish. I mean, you name it. Some will try to say, and I hope I'm preaching to the choir here, but you know, sometimes people will say that things can't be done within the regular school system. And I just think this is a testament that it can. Don't let people believe you said they have to break off and do some independent, private thing that takes resources away from all the kids. This model of dependent charters and other innovation within the public school system pulls all the resources. So it doesn't hurt anybody and keeps us all together and doesn't sort of balkanize it. And, you know, like I said, I wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, but I want to make that point that I'm not sure it's obvious to people all the time, especially in, you know, this day and age when we're probably about to hear a lot about something called "school choice." So appreciate you letting me make that point.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments. Mr. Mike.
Okay, so I couldn't not speak tonight. So I have had the pleasure of being both a mentor and a parent at the Met. And I started my love for this school as a mentor, I don't know, eight years ago or something, of multiple students. And I've just been blown away ever since by all the things that this school can do. And I've had one child graduate from the Met. I have another one that's a freshman now, sitting there in the front row, who could have spoken tonight. And I've just been continually impressed. This is a school that really supports kids that are traditional learners, that are non-traditional learners, and really wraps around these kids. And I think the thing that is the most striking for me is the development of those youth and adult relationships at the school. You know, I think a lot of times at schools, especially at high school, you know, you spend 50 minutes going to class and then you move on to the next one. And the way they use their advisory schedule and the way that they develop, there are different ways of connecting the kids to all the teachers on campus has just been incredible. I'm sorry that Chico had to sneak out. He's been an amazing mentor to my kids. And I just, you know, appreciate so much of what you all do. And I'm very happy to see you all here and hear all the stories from everyone.
Thank you. A member, Ryan.
So I will be very, very brief. I have been fortunate enough to have Met youth work on community work that I've done in the past. And this year, I get to be a mentor to Hannah Miller, so I just want to give her a shout out, even though she's not here tonight, who's working on an anti-bullying campaign for the school district. And currently, just finished up a survey of our Safe Haven School District and found that youth did not know about it like they should and that we need to do a better job with youth-led communication planning. So I'm excited to have her as part of our effort to ensure inclusivity in the district. And I'm really proud of all of the great work that the Met is doing. And JoJo, since you're in the front row and being put on the hot spot, you are just an incredible example of the wonderful youth that come out of the Met. So keep on doing what you're doing as a school, supporting our kids.
I will say my own piece. I've appreciated the opportunity to visit many times and to do several special projects, particularly around civics at the Met. And I appreciate the welcoming student body and teachers, your faculty, and of course, Principal Wolf. We were able to host the Secretary of State last year, along with our county registrar, and the first program that either one of them did to register students who were under the age of 18. So we implemented a brand-new law in the state of California at your school. So that was a really remarkable opportunity to get people engaged in civics at the very moment that they can, when they turn 16 now because of this new state law. So that was really cool. And I'm working with one of your teachers, Eli. As I've recalled, when you came up here, that I'm a little bit behind on my assignment, but we're gonna be doing some civics classes at the Met. And I'm very excited to be able to partner with you at that program because the students really get it and they just jump into it and, you know, they keep me on my toes. So I appreciate that. And it says a lot about your school and the leadership of you and your faculty. This is a conference first reading item, so we will be back in two weeks for the formal vote. And I very much appreciate everyone coming out tonight and telling us about how wonderful we know your school is. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the consent agenda. Do we have any items that any members might want to have polled from the consent agenda before we approve it?
President Hanson, I'd like to poll item 10.18, approve waiver request and affidavit. I think Gerardo would come and present on it.
Any other items anyone would like to poll? So hearing that, do I hear a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar? And a second?
Second.
Hopefully. All right, thank you. All in favor? All right, very well. So now we will hear item 10.18.
So this item is a waiver request because we lost, as the schools were closed. So when the schools are closed, if we don't fire a waiver, it's a formal process. We don't fire a waiver for that due to an emergency, or we will lose the ADA for that day, or we have to make the school day at the end of the school. So by filing the waiver, you approve the process goes from here to the county, to the state. So this is filing a waiver for these three schools. And they were closed because at the beginning, this is due to the storms and the rain. So we were monitoring the night before. Two of those schools were closed due to the electricity and one lack of water for us.
Okay, so just so I understand, the waiver is so that we can get the ADA on those days? Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
So hearing that, might there be a motion to approve item?
So moved.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. We are on item 11.0, Board Workshops. Let me call up Mr. Browning and Mr. Cooper. I know that wasn't correct, but I couldn't catch myself before I just read it right off the page. So Rich and Nate, come on up. I'll just do that. Superintendent Search Process and Timeline.
President Hanson, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda, thank you very much. It's an honor for Leadership Associates to be able to partner with you on this superintendent search. As you know, one of the most critical decisions that a board makes is the selection of a superintendent. I want to first of all thank the work of the Subcommittee, who's been communicating with us, and Nathaniel Browning, who's been really on top of communication at all hours. He makes sure things get done. I really appreciate it. I want to first of all talk a little bit about Leadership Associates so the public and the board can be reminded of who we are. We're a superintendent search firm that primarily focuses on California. Over the years, since 1996, we've done 350 searches, actually more like 360 searches. In this area, we are doing Sacramento. We've finished, I'm not on that team, Oakland. We've recently completed Davis, Novato, Mount Diablo, Dublin, Fremont. And so we're kind of very, and I mentioned Mount Diablo, pretty familiar with the area. We're not doing those now. Those are pretty much completing. San Francisco and Oakland being the last two that will be completed here. On this search, my partner will be Dr. Kent Beckler, who couldn't be here today. He'll be here at the next meeting when we're showing you everyone that applied and the whole list of candidates. So what I'd like to do with this slide in front of you is just kind of talk about the reason we believe we've been the most successful search firm in California. We do about 65% of the searches with about six, seven search firms out there. So to begin with, now I'm gonna click it, right? I think go little by little. The first thing that is important, which you have already taken care of, is an in-depth candidate profile. And the Subcommittee took care of that, working with Nathaniel. We gave some input into that. But it is a very well-done profile. This profile will be kind of like a job announcement, if you will, because you will have extensive community input, which will advise the board as to specifically what the community wants to see. So the board will be advised by that process. And again, in this case, this is what the candidates will see, the profile. And this is what they'll kind of make sure they fit into as they apply for the job. The next thing is extensive stakeholder input. I've seen the plan that the district has devised and designed to be able to get input from everybody here so that the board is fully advised as to what the community wants in a superintendent. This takes the form of qualities and characteristics. And I've seen your formal documents, and you've got them translated into several languages, which is really great for your community. But that stakeholder input will give you kind of, the job descriptions out there, this will give you very finite information about what the community wants to see. The next piece is the recruitment campaign and outreach, and that's our job. We've already begun that job last week. We had the Superintendent Summit, and we were able to interview a number of people that expressed interest in the job, even though it's not formally out there until you approve everything tonight. But there will be great interest in this job, and you'll have a nice, full suite of candidates. We want to let you know that we bring you all the candidates, everybody that applies. You'll see who they are. You'll see their application and so forth. We will recommend to you people that we believe fits the match that you've designed in your job description and what you get from your community. The board, of course, will choose from all of the applicants who you'd like to see be interviewed. And that will take place at a subsequent meeting. We will conduct thorough reference checks. We don't want any surprises for the board, and you're gonna do those as well. So we're gonna have kind of a double opportunity to make sure that anyone that you see as a candidate is the right person. Each of them is the right person, so you can pick the right person. After we do that, the reference checks are done. Then the next is, we will present, as I said, all of the candidates. You will determine who you'd like to interview. At that point, you will determine the questions will be, the kinds of things you want to ask us about the candidates in terms of references and so forth, and track record. And then you'll move forward to hopefully select your superintendent and have that superintendent onboard sometime in April. So with that, that's kind of what I wanted to say. Our next slide is a set of questions that we ask boards to ask themselves and see if we've answered them in the process with the committee and with Nathaniel's work. Does the process allow for extensive, high-quality stakeholder input and board engagement throughout the search? Answer is yes. We'll be in contact with you with regard to the candidates that we're recruiting. Not specific names every day, but you'll be able to keep abreast of, you know, what the candidate pool looks like. We'll have great communication through myself and Nathaniel and the board committee to the degree that the board committee wants to be a part of the Met. We'll also then make sure that that communication gives you timely updates into what all the activities are that are going on. I think probably Nathaniel and I will coordinate that update to the board. And that will be the communication side. And so you can actively be, you know, up to date and make any suggestions you'd like to see. Will we have a highly competitive field of candidates? Absolutely. As I mentioned, we've already talked to a number of people that are very highly qualified. So you're gonna see, because of who you are, the extensive candidate list that you'll get. And we will try to, as I said, bring to you a set of people that exactly match the profile. But again, you'll see everybody. Number four, will the candidates be vetted? They'll be double-vetted because we're gonna make sure that no one in that pool has any challenges that the board might have to face in terms of their candidacy. And then the district will be doing some in-depth reference checks as well. And finally, will you make the decision on any and all candidates you want to interview? I just mentioned that. And will you ultimately be in charge of making the final determination of who will become your superintendent? Absolutely. This is your search. We're here to partner with the committee and the staff to make sure you get this done and get it done the right way. So with that, entertain any questions you might have.
Mr. Barrios, do we have any public comments on this item?
No.
Board comments? Board Member Wu?
Thank you, Vice President Ryan. In looking at this suggested superintendent search timeline, I just want to share with my colleagues who weren't here last time. Once we had gone through the interviews and we really, we tentatively selected Superintendent Banda as our candidate. Several of us, including, and I see in the back there, former member Gustavo Royal. He and I and former member Rodriguez flew up to Seattle. The purpose of the trip up to Seattle, we spent a full day in interviews because we wanted to make sure that everything that we were expecting based on our interview with Superintendent Banda was in fact true. We interviewed board members. We interviewed board president. We interviewed members of the cabinet. We met all of the major union partners and some parents as well. And it really confirmed for me that we are making the right decision. And the reason why I share that with you today is because I'm gonna leave it up to you all, my colleagues, to decide whether or not you want to add that as another step in the timeline because I thought it was very helpful, at least for me, to confirm, not to make sure... not to make sure that there were no skeletons in the closet, to confirm that we were making the right choice. It's not in the schedule, but it might be something that you want to consider to add to the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Good morning.
Start of a long process, so thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Cochran.
Thank you, Mr. Thome, very much for speaking. One of the exciting things about this search is your experience in California and the focus of the search being Northern California. Can you address that want of ours and any special information you might be able to provide to help us hit that goal?
Yeah, we're a firm that does statewide searches, but we've done a ton of work up here in this area. And given the preference that you've expressed to focus the search on this area, we have a lot of experience. We have about five of us out of the partners who do a lot of work up here. As I mentioned, all the searches that I mentioned, I was involved with up in this area, as was Dr. Beckler, Kent Beckler. So we've got experience in this area. And you're a Northern California district. You're up here, and it's a little bit different than being down in the LA region or San Diego region. So the focus will be here. So, and of the people that we talked to last week, six of the 10 were from, very close to this district, no names to mention, but very close to here geographically. And you'll see some very qualified candidates. It's a very attractive job, attractive district.
Seeing no other comments?
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Very much. Item 11.2, Budget Items, Mr. Castillo.
Good evening, President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, members of the board. Tonight is the first reading for budget reductions for 2017-18. It is the first time that we bring budget reductions during the last three years of this manic due. What we've covered tonight is California, the governor's outlook for California. We will go over some budget guidelines principles. We will remind ourselves about restricted and unrestricted funds, and we will review ECOs 44919, including 44955. We will also give you the budget recommendation reductions for 2017-18. So from the last two board meetings, we discussed that there is not, in the new governor's proposal for January, there is not additional ongoing revenue. There is actually a set for the 1.4 COLA, and we have actually a decrease compared to what we projected the first year in December. Now, these two codes from the governor reflect how quickly things could change in the state economy. Something that is also new that we were not experiencing in the past is the big uncertainty at a federal level, and we have significant federal revenue funds. So our guiding principles, in order to have a balanced budget in the school districts, we must use ongoing revenues for ongoing costs. One-time revenues has to be appropriate identifier for one-time expenditures, and we need to follow the LCAP process. That is our new guidelines, that's the new law. Most categorical funds are self-supporting, and so we need to compete with those guidelines. Sometimes we receive grants for a period of one year, two years, and we need to reapply for those grants, but they're still one-time. So we know that unrestricted funds we could use for any legal purpose. Restricted funds, they have restraints, not only in the legal requirements, but also in time requirements. Most of the restricted funds are one-time funds. Some of them could be for a period of five years, seven years, but they're still restricted funds. The funds, the reductions that we're presenting tonight are for Title I. We expect about 2.9 million reduction for 2017-18. We also have a couple grants that the grant cycle ends this year, and those are Title IV and also ACES, so after-school education and safety. We have applied for these grants, and we expect to get the funds back. But at this time, at this point in time, we don't know how much we will get back, so therefore they are in the budget reductions. Besides those other two grants, we also have, this was a competitive grant, two-pit, that is going away. And we also have some grants from the vector grant that we have some reductions. So all of these are categorical funding reductions. So our recommendation for tonight is that we reduce this, that we have implemented these recommendations and reductions. This is the first reading. But I want to give an example as a family that could understand. This will be like a family has that income, their payroll does not change from year to year, but the rent goes up for the following year by 10%. So that family will have to make other sacrifices either by getting another job or increasing revenues to cover the 10% in increasing costs, or they need to find another home. That could be as difficult as that if they don't increase the revenue. So our grants, even if we get the same amount of funding from one year to another, we're getting reduction because, as I reminded, our cost's going up. We have increases in pension costs. We have increases in health benefit costs. That means we have the less purchasing power for the following year. So we're working really hard to renew these grants and get it, but this is the prudent thing to do. It's very difficult to do these decisions. This is our recommendation that we adopt. This is the first reading. We'll come back at the next meeting. So I covered this. You know, one of the items is the education codes, 44919 and 44951 and 44955. It really says that school districts, if they don't give notice to certificate staff by the March 15, we are, those employees, we need to continue them for the following year. So we have a better time deadline, and we're working with our HR team, human resources is working and looking at these positions in very detail. They look at seniority, they spend a lot of time. So this is the beginning of the process. So our next is action by the March 2. We will continue monitor the state and the federal budget, and we follow the LCAP process. And we must be vigilant of all expenditures, especially those expenditures that are continued ongoing. And at this point, we're available for any questions.
Do you have any public comments, Mr. Barrios?
None on this item.
And then, board comments. I have one story that I thought I would share. On a recent trip I made to Washington, D.C. a few weeks ago with the National School Board Association, we had our first presentation was with U.S. House Education Chair Virginia Foxx, speaking to a group of about 500 school board members. And among the many amazing things she said first, she just said, "Be prepared to do more with less." She told us to be prepared for block grants. She told us that she prefers, she says, "I don't prefer to call," she goes, "I prefer to call vouchers scholarships." So I think that there's a lot of things that are coming our way from the federal government that, you know, we all need to be prepared for. We need to be prepared to work together, you know, with everybody who's part of our education community, our families, our students, our teachers, our classified staff. And then the other most shocking thing she said was, "I didn't have many talents, so I went into education." A gasp of the folks in the room was audible. It was a remarkable statement. And to think that that person was in charge of education policy for the United States of America, it was shocking. But during the course of the three days that I was there and meeting with folks, Republican staff and Democratic staff, you know, it's a new world, and it's not a particularly good one for the next couple of years. So I just implore everybody that it's a time for us to work together and really be positive in our working relationships and try to be, you know, as supportive as we can, even though there's always tough decisions that have to be made. So I appreciate you as always giving us this information so we can be the best stewards and the best partners with our students and our families and our union partners. Anyone else have any, anything else? Okay, very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item 11.3, Mr. Lopez and Company. Yes. Information item, overview of the new state accountability system.
Good evening. Good evening, President Hanson, board members, and Superintendent Banda. My name's Elliot Lopez, Chief Information Officer, and I'm here today with Kathy Morrison, our LCAP SIPSA coordinator, and Sarah Petrowski, Student Outcomes Coordinator. We're here today to provide a briefing on the new state accountability system, the California School Dashboard, which replaces the now-defunct API and integrates closely with the LCAP process. Tonight's presentation is intended to be a broad overview, and we will return with more details as district data becomes available to the public.
Good evening, President Hanson, board members, and Superintendent Banda. I'm Kathy Morrison. The state's goal for this new accountability system is to create an integrated local, state, and federal accountability and continuous improvement system. The system aligns with the eight state priorities outlined in the Local Control Funding Formula and represents the final piece of the LCFF LCAP puzzle. Tonight's briefing will provide high-level details on this new system and our plan to communicate it to stakeholders. To understand our new accountability system, we described the shift after Local Control Funding Formula was signed in 2013. LCFF introduced the concept of greater local authority over spending decisions and provides additional funding to districts for the number of low-income, English learner, and foster youth enrolled. LCFF included a shift from a single measure to a multiple-measure accountability system. In addition to the oversight and funding changes initiated by LCFF, the new state dashboard constitutes additional changes in the way our performance is measured. Achievement is still part of the equation, but growth is also accounted for. This slide identifies the elements that are the components of the new accountability system and the projected release dates. Not all of the elements are available for publication by the state. On the left side are state-determined indicators that will be included in the dashboard in March. The indicators described as local in the right-hand column will also be rolled out in March. There are two additional indicators forthcoming in the fall of 2017, which will be the next dashboard iteration. A dashboard will be generated for every local education agency in the state as well as every school. We will show you a prototype dashboard later in this presentation. Key to the design of this new rating system are these principles: defining accountability by more than student test scores, providing a level of disaggregation so that districts may focus on disparities between student groups, and using this dashboard as an additional tool to support LCAP development and decision-making. Sarah Petrowski will now provide you with the details of how the system is constructed.
Good evening, President Hanson, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda. I'm Sarah Petrowski. The econographic scale seen here is used consistently across the California State Dashboard for state indicators to show performance level. Status refers to how a school is performing. The year of the data varies from indicator to indicator. Change measures the difference between current and past performance. Using data, these levels are then charted on what is referred to as a five-by-five table to determine the color rating. Now I want to show you how the color rating is determined using status and change on the five-by-five table. This is not what the public will see on the dashboard. It is only a tool used to determine the color rating. This slide displays a generic table. Five vertical squares identify status, and five across the horizontal axis identify change. We use the grid to find status and change level. The intersection of those two rows gives us the color rating. Let's consider a school in the high-status category that declined from the previous year. This school would receive an orange color rating. A school with a status in the medium category that increased from the previous year will receive a green color rating. This example shows that growth is of equal importance to status in this accountability system, and districts, schools, and student groups who are making positive gains are given credit for that. The state indicators are populated using state data sources, and the years utilized to determine status and change vary from indicator to indicator. The California School Dashboard will provide performance ratings at the district, school, and student group level. Student group is the new term CDE is using instead of subgroup. Independent and dependent charter schools will each have their own dashboard and will not be included in the data that determines the SCUSD color rating. This means that the California School Dashboard data will not be the same as what is seen on Data Quest, as Data Quest does include the charter schools. Starting next year, the California School Dashboard will be refreshed with new data every fall. We have provided you with a handout of the prototype dashboard for an imaginary California school district. This is what the user will see when they view the dashboard online beginning in March. In addition to state indicators, there are four local indicators that will be included on the dashboard. The district will self-assess and self-report on these indicators. These indicators are not scored by color, but by three simple criteria: met, not met, or not met for two years. Please note that the school reports will not include local indicators. Once we have captured this data and identified a rating, an additional element of accountability and transparency will be required. The local performance indicators must be approved at a publicly-held board meeting. The local indicators are basic services, implementation of state standards, parent involvement, and school climate. I will now turn it back to Kathy.
The new California State Dashboard is linked to the new LCAP template. In the absence of an accountability system, each district identified expected measurable outcomes in the LCAP and reported on progress annually, but there was a large amount of variation from district to district in how these outcomes were measured. Now, with a new three-year LCAP template, there are connections to the California State Dashboard in several places: the annual update, the goal section, and a new section titled "The Plan Summary." One example of the connection is shown in this screenshot of the new template's annual update. As you see, As you see, there are two places where districts are prompted to reflect on their performance on the California School Dashboard. Another section that connects to the LCAP is the Plan Summary. This new section contains three prompts that must be completed using the California School Dashboard. The district will describe areas where we've made the greatest progress. Next, the district will describe areas of greatest need. Finally, we will describe any performance gaps, student groups achieving two or more levels below all students. This is a start to identifying and addressing achievement and opportunity gaps. Elliot.
So we're aware of the potential complexities that the numerous emerging data systems present for our stakeholders, and we are working to ensure that other resources, such as the district's own data dashboard, complement the California School Dashboard and that they fill in some of the details that the state, that the state system does not address. Our team has participated in many professional learning sessions in order to understand this evolving new system and to best inform our district leaders. This includes trainings with the California Collaborative for Excellence in Education, the Sacramento County Office of Ed, School Services, and the California Department of Education. In addition, team members are participating in the Early Adopters Professional Learning Network with several other districts. Our work has been recognized in these venues as leading the state in rolling out the California School Dashboard to stakeholders. We're now beginning to anticipate and proactively plan to address issues surrounding the ratings we may receive at the district, school, and student group levels. In the coming weeks, we will be focused on communicating to our stakeholders from principals to teachers, to parents, and community members. Because this integrated local, state, and federal accountability and continuous improvement system is still a work in progress, we will continue to return to the board to share information and developments as a surface. The state believes that this accountability, accountability system will meet federal ESSA reporting requirements as well as those of the state. When the dashboard is live, it will be found at the webpage indicated here. Thank you.
That was an information item. Do we have any public comment? No public comment? Do we have any? Member Ryan?
Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, layering dashboard upon dashboard becomes a fairly complex process, and then communicating the value of those metrics, particularly to parents and stakeholder groups who don't speak education lingo, becomes even more difficult. And so I am interested in hearing how you are making this more digestible for multiple audiences. Clearly, you talked a little bit about making sure that you're going to be translating this in the outreach that's happening, and I have some other questions as well.
We have discovered that the state does not plan to translate the dashboard. So at this-
Will we be undertaking that?
I think that's something we should consider. It's important. There's a really unique opportunity for our families. On February 27th, David Sapp, who is the Deputy Policy Director of the State Board of Education, is coming to the Parent Information Exchange Luncheon to share the prototype dashboard with the parents that attend that luncheon, who are principally Spanish speakers. And so we'll be interested to see how that focus group goes. It will give us some information as how we approach our communication strategy.
So I want to commend your work, Kathy. You're doing a phenomenal job in the field, and Sarah, you as well. I do want to say, at least three times in this presentation and in the documents, Sac City Unified was lauded as being a leader in this work. And so that being recognized, let's really lead, and really leading means translating this in a way that is accessible to families who do not have English as their first language. So let's step up and do that, and I would love to have my fellow board members and also the district partners support us in that. And then the other question I have really is around the accountability piece of this. You know, in the presentation, we talked about how we adhere to the new state accountability rubric. Is there any expectation that if a school fails to meet these key markers, there will be repercussions, or is the accountability largely an informational tool?
There are no repercussions at the school level.
Okay. So then my other question is around, and I think you did a really good job of articulating how the color coding system allows schools to not be just measured on rate of progress, but benchmark against themselves, which I think is really important, particularly recognizing that some school sites are more challenged than others. So let's say we see that one school has really begun at a very low level, and that school sees minimal growth, but a like-school site, similar demographics, socioeconomic status, et cetera, sees a pretty significant growth of period, growth over that same period of time. How do we address that to ensure equity and equal resources so that all schools also benefit from the growth?
That's a really great question. I think our intention is to use this and some of the other data resources that we have available to us to identify successes within the district and to leverage the great work that's actually happening across our schools. So this will help us to pinpoint where we are making some progress and to seek to replicate that progress in some of our other schools as well.
So seeking to replicate the processes, the progresses, we've identified that a school's a high performer. We figure out a way to create mentor sites and look at what programs they're offering that are unique to that school site that we can then take and share with others.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you, Elliot. Appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Wu.
Thank you, President Hanson. And just, I've participated in some of these workshops with staff, and sometimes the devil's in the details, and yet at sometimes, inquiring public just want to have a summary. And then if the, if they're further interested in what the summary says, the details are further into the, into the document. So for, for those who are having a difficult time figuring out what all this dashboard means, let me just suggest that my analogy for this dashboard is this is the Consumer Affairs, Consumer Reports method of picking, looking at schools and school districts. If you look at, for example, Consumer Reports and you want to look at used cars, for example, you can look at laundry list of used cars, and you look at the bubbles, whether they're white, or they're black, or they're red, and at a glance, you can look at the various indicators, and you can kind of tell for yourself, that's one I want to further detail on, I'm going to dig into it. So this is kind of the analogy of the Consumer Reports method of evaluating and looking into schools, for those who are simpletons like myself.
Thank you. It was useful for me, too. Any other questions or comments from board? Mr. Banda?
Thank you. I just really want to commend these guys. I, you know, I'm glad that, that Board Member Ryan, you know, was able to highlight the fact that we are a leader, and these folks have been on top of this, but other projects as well. You know, as we know, there are a number of dashboards, a number of accountability systems that are floating out there. So it makes it all the more challenging to try to integrate these and make sure that we're not creating a lot more work and confusing people. So I really want, want to thank them and appreciate them for working so well together and being the innovators and being out in front of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we move to the next item, I know Mr. Wu recognizes, but it's like, welcome, Mr. Gustavo Arroyo. Thank you for joining us. I think he came here for dessert, so he'll join us afterwards when we're all done. So thank you for coming. Let's move on to item 11.4. Kathy Allen. Come on over.
Okay. Good evening, President Hanson, members of the board and Superintendent Banda. No PowerPoint tonight, but just wanted to kind of briefly summarize what's been close to a four-year process on a land swap, the 16th and N property for a property located off of San Joaquin Street. This started very shortly after I arrived at the district in the spring of 2013. Kind of got stalled a little bit for a variety of reasons. We brought it back up in roughly October of 2014 with the process of, what, what, what does the district have to do to declare property surplus? What does the exchange look like? We had a couple of informational sessions, I think, on, on the process, which is very convoluted in, in some regards. In December of 14, basically from December of 14 through August of 2015, we were developing an RFQ for a real estate advisory firm, went through that process, hired a firm, I think Member Pritchett was on that interview panel. Back when we had the Facilities Ad Hoc Committee, it came to that committee in November of 2015, and then from that committee, we have another committee, the Central Kitchen Task Force, in December 15, where we, we brought this process to that committee. April 2016, we started working with Nathaniel. We came up with an assessment to start ranking some of the sites that were also potentially available, either sites that we already owned or other property throughout the district for use as a potential central kitchen. Still came, always came back to San Joaquin. In May, we kind of started poking around Oakland Unified's to check out what their central kitchen was going to look like. Again, in May 16, brought it back to closed session for some more comment about what that swap would entail. October 2016, we hired our architect. We are scheduling tours right now. We plan to go bring this back to the Facilities Committee for more discussion on February 23rd. No decisions have been made yet, obviously. We'll, we'll bring that hopefully to the board in March. We still have a lot of work to be done. You've heard me speak many times about that we're treating the Redding campus and the San Joaquin campus as one great big campus, recognizing that we have a lot of issues on the existing Redding site that really has had no, no love and care since it was built. So very, very exciting time for us to move forward with this one critical step here as to approve the resolution, which essentially approves the exchange agreement that was shared earlier with you in closed session. There are copies of it on the back table for members of the audience that would like that, but pretty, pretty simple process. And I think I'll ask Member Pritchett to kind of step forward a little bit.
Thank you, Kathy. So as Kathy had mentioned, this is about four years in the making, and the Facilities Committee, since it had been formed, have been discussing this. And the Facilities Committee has recently unanimously, is unanimously in favor of the agreement of the exchange that you have in front of you. And I'll ask Kathy to kind of go into a little bit about, well, you already talked about the history, but if you could maybe talk a little bit more in depth about the stakeholder meetings that need to take place or have taken place.
Well, and we're quickly counting and providing some information for the B in their article they wrote earlier this week, we, we quickly hit 12 different opportunities where we had stakeholder involvement, either via meetings directly. Hell, actually, we were using Washington Elementary before it opened as a venue for Old Marshall and 16th and N conversations, and then we also had some opportunities at the Facilities Committee from time to time, and that was without really digging through. So we, we've done an awful lot of stakeholder input, comments, meetings, and groups, and there's probably 300 people on that email list. So a lot of people get information they don't even want, you know? We're starting to get the please take me off your list kind of thing, so, which is a lot better than how come I've never received an email.
Not to mention also the people that attend the Facilities Committees.
Yes.
Do we have any, are you, finish?
Well, maybe just for, for the public's use, the, basically, the, the major points in the exchange agreement are, we swapped 16th and N for the property at San Joaquin. The delta between the appraised value is 210,000 in our favor. And working with Crestly Homes, who's the owner of the property, they're going to provide some additional soils testing on the San Joaquin site at, at their risk right now. And then when we both complete our due diligence periods, the 210 would come to us in the form of cash minus about $23,000 that they're spending right now to do some of those soil tests, soil tests for us. So it's a pretty equal, which is what you want to see in a property exchange.
Good. You have any public comments, please?
Six public comments. If you could please come up to the front in this order: Isaac Gonzalez, Katie Valenzuela-Garcia, Erin Dimmitt, Elena Davert, Todd McEwen, Ben Thomas.
Welcome. Good evening, board. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Sacramento. Went to John Bidwell Elementary School, went to Gady Middle School, John F. Kennedy High School. My daughter currently attends Phoebe Elementary. I'm also a past president of the Tahoe Park Neighbor Association, current board member, a member of various groups that work with the California Endowment, Building Healthy Communities Coalition, various healthy task force meetings I've attended over the past few years. A huge supporter of Q and R, and I'm very glad tonight to be in full support of this land, land swap deal. Also want to thank Crestly Homes for their patience with this project, and I'm glad that they're, or the, the development company, that they're still involved with this and that we're going to get to swap this. I'm also very glad to have this coming to Tahoe Park. I think it's a very appropriate use for the site, so I'm in full support of that. As the task force is assembled and we begin to discuss the potential use of the facility, I hope there, there will be a little more outreach to Tahoe Park Neighbor Association. We actually have a very robust land use committee that would be, love to have a seat at the table and kept abreast of these things. I think that you'll find actually that there would be an asset to you, because as far as I'm concerned, the Neighbor Association is very much in favor of this land use. So if you want to check that off the list as far as community engagement, the Tahoe Park Neighbor Association Land Use Committee would be a great asset to you. And again, I just think this is great. I can't wait until the day where we have a state-of-the-art kitchen that will be providing healthy food for our students, which will be really great, and I know a lot of my members in my community feel the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Katie Valenzuela-Garcia.
Hold on, one quick second, Mr. Gonzalez.
Does the gentleman that's supposed to, do you have a business card? Isaac? Do you happen to have a business card with you?
Maybe you can share your email address.
Don't have one on me, but I can make sure that Michael gets it.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm joining my, I'm joining my Talik Village neighbors, so.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Katie Valenzuela-Garcia here tonight on behalf of the Sacramento Food Policy Council, and we've been very pleased to participate in the great process run by President Hanson for the central kitchen, and we're here in strong support of the land swap deal tonight. Also to emphasize our excitement to get started with construction, and I know that's shared by all of you on the board, to start spending this money before costs go up any further, but we're also just really urgently excited because of the transformative impact we think this will have on our food system, on our students, particularly those who have trouble accessing healthy food at home. So we're here in strong support and partnership with you all to finish this process out. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Erin Dimmitt.
Good evening. My name is Erin Dimmitt, and I'm here representing the Sacramento Food Policy Council. I am here this evening to support, to express the support for the central kitchen property exchange. This property exchange is important as it brings us one step closer to making the central kitchen a reality, which will help realize the ultimate goal of providing fresh, local, and healthy food for all students in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elena Davert.
My name is Elena Davert, also here with the Sacramento Food Policy Council in support of the land swap in order to allow for the construction of a central kitchen. In addition to supporting the supply of healthy food for our students, I've also worked on a few local farms, and I'm really excited to see the opportunity for better procurement processes and supporting farm-to-fork, farm-to-school. So it's a really exciting opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Good evening. Todd McPherson here, representing Luther Burbank, Urban Garden, the BUG Program, also the SAC Food Policy Council, and also a member of the Central Kitchen Task Force, here to express my support for the, the land swap and also the expedient development of the central kitchen project for reasons we can expand access to healthy food for all the students of our great district, also to increase the opportunity for procurement of fresh local produce, particularly, or hopefully for student-grown produce as well. We're building up a new urban ag academy at Luther Burbank High School, and I hope to grow some produce for you all to buy, to distribute to students in the district, also to increase the career technical learning opportunities for students in the, or the fields of culinary and ag as well. I think a state-of-the-art central kitchen would be a fantastic asset for our youth to have amazing learning opportunities, hands-on, career technical experiences as part of their high school career. So thanks a lot, and I hope this goes through.
Thank you very much. Ben Thomas.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Ben Thomas. I am here with the SAC Food Policy Council, and I also work with the Community Alliance- I am here with the SAC Food Policy Council, and I also work with the Community Alliance with Family Farmers, where I work with 40 school districts across Northern California to source more local produce from family farms, including the Oakland Unified Central Kitchen, where I'm directly working with them to help plan their produce processing when they open up, hopefully next fall. And just want to impress in following the speakers before me that in an environment with 50% of students qualifying for free and reduced meals in the state, 40% of their calories on average nationally, including in California, coming from school food, that the impact, having studied from Elk Grove to Espardo, from UC Davis down to Lowdi that just opened up in Oakland, which is right about to, that the impact of fresh, scratch cooking, access to local ingredients, being able to centrally aggregate, being able to buy whole produce, and this is just talking about one aspect of the plate, my opinion the most important aspect, but only one aspect. And just to thank you for moving forward quickly on the land swap and pushing forward the construction of the central kitchen. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wu?
Move to, move from conference to action?
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ready?
Wu staff's recommendation.
Okay, Member Ryan?
So, aye.
Oh, there we go. So, since we're nearing the witching hour, I will be very brief. I want to thank President Hanson and my fellow board members for their leadership, as well as the staff who have worked tirelessly over the course of the last four years, and in particular in the last 18 months to make this vision happen. I'm incredibly happy that we are at the point we are tonight, and I think that this is a sound decision that we'll be making in actually voting to approve this swap. I also just want to really recognize the community members who've put countless hours into continuing to make their voices heard, as supporters of Measure Q and R, that frankly would have liked to see the central kitchen break ground years ago. And this is once again a reminder to us that in a high-poverty district where many of our students have the majority of their meals at their school sites, they deserve access to high-quality, locally sourced fruits and vegetables, and to the extent that we can, scratch cooking that changes their relationship to food. And so this is just the beginning of what will be a longer process, but I am incredibly proud and pleased to take this vote tonight, and then hopefully to create a vision for a central kitchen that becomes the gold standard in central kitchens across the state.
Thank you. Well, I'll just close then by saying, and I, as a, as a board member, I've learned many, many things, and one, patience is a virtue. So I've become very virtuous by stint of the patience that is required on so many of these things, and I'd like to thank all the folks that have been involved in this who've, you know, joined us in being patient and helping us work through the process, because there's no roadmap for doing what we're doing. And we're all volunteers here on the dais, and you and the audience and in the community that are helping with all these wonderful projects that we're able to do. I was talking with someone yesterday about the fact that we have a budget of our district's $550 million a year, $200 million of bond capacity left, 45,000 students, 80 schools, 4,200 staff. It's an amazing amount of raw materials to do some really incredible things. And when we all work together, and when we come up with common visions and things that we want to work on, and we commit to that, and we're patient with each other and supportive of each other, we can really do some amazing things. I think we've got some wonderful projects in front of us. This is going to be one of the very, very best. I too, very excited to be supportive and really appreciate my board and the staff and the community and Crestly and all the folks that have been part of this very patient process. We have a motion, I have not heard a second yet.
Second.
I hear a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
It's a resolution, so I think, do you need to roll call that?
Sure, I'll just call them.
The resolution is unanimous.
Okay, got it. We're good.
Seven, zero, zero.
Yes, let the record reflect a unanimous decision. Thank you very much, everybody. Wonderful. Kathy, welcome. We'll move right to 11.5.
We'll get to end the night with two fun things, yeah.
Good evening, Deana Ellis with Crestly Homes. I just wanted to say quickly, just thank you so much for your confidence. We understand the transparency and the process that had to go before us, and I think in the future, this will be seen as just a visionary step for the school district. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm very happy to have Principal David Rodriguez with me here tonight. We're going to be talking about the West Campus High School core academic renovation and repair. Come on up, David. And he had four teachers that were going to also come tonight to talk to you about the process and how they got involved with it, but when I told him that it was set for 9:30, and that was probably more like, going to be like 10:30, sent the teachers home, and David stuck around, so I really, really appreciate him being here. So, again, similar things to what we've done on the other core academic renovation and repairs, we start with initial scoping, walk, site walk tours with a group of three different architect firms. We come back and we do formal interviews with them, with the site staff, we just facilitate it for them, they pick the firm that they want. We've done an awful lot of community outreach meetings here, you'll see a lot of dates kind of flashing up, we won't really talk about them too much. One of the back-to-school nights, I think, it was pouring down rain, and we had a ton of people there, which was just awesome. These are all the staff meetings that we've held so far. We were also fortunate to have the involvement of Erin Picho, our science coordinator, who, this is kind of new for him as well, so it's been fun to have him participate in some of these meetings as we planned what this building might look like. So, and basically what we have in scope is two different things. We have a new two-story science classroom building, again focusing on STEM, with some technology and engineering labs, we have outdoor learning areas that we'll be building as well, new classrooms as well, and then both wet and dry labs for science. And then the second major part of this is some field improvements that have been promised for quite a while out of Measure R, so it's a new synthetic turf sports field, it's not going to be, it's a practice field, and the staff has asked me, could I please give them a track? And I said, only if you can work on an 80-yard football field. So, we're really, really squeezing things in to get that in there, and then a new fire lane, sorry about that, and a road, and I'll show you that graphically here in a second. So that's essentially where the two projects are going, the field's going on the adjacent elementary school site. We've also reached out to them and talked to them about what it would do for their campus. The two-story building is going in place of several old portables that are there, we're either relocating, removing, or don't need anymore. Here is a drawing of our proposed new access, one of the access roads for that site. On the bottom right, you'll see where it says new gate. So that area right there is a fire lane, so we can't close it off, but the students from Mark Twain actually walk across that fire lane every day, a couple of times a day, to eat at the West Campus cafeteria. So that was of concern to us as well, as we were talking about what this project would look like. So by designing or adding a new road or new entryway into some parking, we'll be able to close off that gate during the day, except for fire access, so the kids will have a safe path of travel to get to and from. I know you can really read all of this, but just, you know, thought we'd throw this in there. This is basically our floor plan, which is, again, not super readable, but pretty cool stuff. These are some renderings that we've had over the time. We've gone back and forth a little bit, we used input from the community and from the parents and from the students, which was the most fun part, is to really hear about what the students have to say about this. We did an exercise at West Campus where we had, I think, option A, option B, option C, and we gave the students one color of dots, and the parents one color of dots, and the teachers one color of dots. And then we came back after several weeks to see, you know, where the dots ended up, and it was, it was a real learning experience for us all, but again, all of that input drive the design of what you're seeing in front here. Some more renderings. So our schedule right now, we did submit to DSA before the end of December, we wanted to get in before there was a code change, which came in January. We expect to get our comments back from DSA, this is very standard, within late March, hopeful full plan approval from DSA. We would, we're going to run these in two different projects, because we can get the field and the road done a lot quicker than we can the science building, so the building will take a year, the field I'm hoping to get done before the end of summer, obviously. So there's a couple of things that are, that move simultaneously, but they're both coming out of DSA at the same time. The funding for this has been Measure Q, the core academic renovation, of roughly 9.4 million, and then the field improvements out of Measure R, roughly 2 million. And then we'll do a quick flyover here, and maybe why that's slang, David, if you want to say a few words about the process or the... Slow on this computer, but you'll get, you'll get the idea.
Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, members of the board, cabinet. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, while you check out this nice flyover. But it was, it was a great experience that we've had. As you know, West Campus has a four-year college-bound track of student population, and the demand for science has increased, that we've had to add upper-division classes to our master's schedule, which is a beautiful thing. We've recently added more sections of physics, we've added an AP Physics II class and an honors chemistry class. So the demand is there, this new space, this new building will allow us to continue to serve our students, but more importantly, allow them access and our staff to state-of-the-art equipment. And I want to thank Ms. Allen and her team for the process that we've gone through. It's, there's a sense of pride and ownership on the side of West Campus because of the fact that the students weren't involved, the parents weren't involved, and the teachers weren't involved, and their voice was heard. And so we are extremely excited about the new building. I'm extremely excited about this new soccer slash football field because of the winter soccer season we're having right now, but it is, it's been a great process, and thank you for giving me this time to speak tonight.
Thirty questions?
Do I get one from McClatchy?
Yeah, two, yeah, two come later.
Okay, okay, I'll be patient. I'm learning patience, so.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, it just keeps going, it was going around in circles. All right, any rights? We'll move on to 12.0. Information received. Future board meeting will be February, no, I'm sorry, March 2nd. Same place, same time. Anyone interested in, oh, I'm sorry, yes. So we have a board retreat, 10 to 4, this Saturday, 9:26, and J Street. And I believe there's a motion to adjourn in honor. Sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Cochran.
Would you please let us know the schedules for the meeting throughout the end of the year?
Yes, can we do that? Yes.
Thank you.
It will be done, will be done. Member Ryan?
I have the very sad duty of sharing that we lost a young person from Leonardo da Vinci, Myse Lee, an eighth grader who everyone said had a smile that would light up a room last week. And I will tell you that the one bright spot in Myse Lee's passing has been the incredible outpouring of community support, everything from families rallying to raise funeral expenses, to third graders putting together a lemonade, lemonade stand fundraiser to bring in $200 to help offset family expenses as well. And I want to thank my fellow board member, Board Member Myveng, who has done a phenomenal job ensuring that we are a resource to the family in these unimaginably difficult times. So I'd like to ask Board Member Veng to share some information about the funeral services and any thoughts that she might have.
Thank you, Board President, Board Vice President, Jessie Ryan. And so I just want to thank Jessie and also Mary Harden Young for their leadership on really helping to make the process seamless as possible for the family. You know, when I visited them, I knew they lived in, just visiting the family, that they lived in extreme poverty, and it was really hard for them. One, already losing their daughter, but figuring out how to pay for the funeral costs. Not only that, I know traditional Mung funerals are very expensive, and you also need extensive family to really hold the funeral, and the family, actually, they don't have much family, and they are a very small family, and so I've been working closely with trustee Jessie Ryan on really getting community support outside of the Mung community to help the family. The funeral arrangement and ceremonies, actually, next week, it is on Wednesday, February 22nd, at Long Cheng Funeral Home. The service will be from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at 6,500 Freeport Boulevard, and we're encouraging all community members to come and support the family. There will be Mung funeral ceremonies going on as well, but we would like to invite the public, the family would like to invite the public to attend, just in solidarity, and also to pay your respects for Myse Lee and her family, and so that's, that's the only thing I have to add. And Jessie, I just really, really want to thank you, and Mary Harden, just for the work that you've done to really help facilitate the process.
Board Member Veng, you've been an amazing partner. I want to say for anyone who's watching who would like to be a resource to the family, there is a You Caring account set up in Myse Lee's name. We are very close to meeting the fundraising goal to be able to offset all of the burial expenses, but as you can imagine, there is so much more than this in terms of supporting this family who is grieving, as so many of us can only, can only, I mean, it's an unimaginable loss for a parent, so there are no words.
We just have a moment of reflection before we adjourn. Thank you for those good words. I will entertain a motion for adjournment?
Are we re-adjourning in a closed session, or are we adjourning?
Be re-adjourning into closed session. All in favor of a motion and a second? Moved, thank you very much.